Hello, I'm Andrew Sullivan, President and CEO of the Internet Society. And this is my report to the Board of Trustees at the 2021 Annual General Meeting on our Action Plan 2021 Success Measures Progress. A couple of years ago, we started work on improving the way that we report on our activities. And there are two different ways that we do that. One is success measures where we report on the extent to which we are achieving the things that we set out for ourselves in a project or in an initiative. The other is is impact indicators, which have to do with whether we change the world, whether we make an effect on it. That comes in an annual report that we put out every year. This, the one for 2020 was put out a little while ago. This update is really about success measures, the measures that the projects are doing. And I really, really appreciate the work of my colleagues in planning and reporting who prepared this report for us. You'll remember that we have three broad areas of work at the Internet Society. We have two kinds of projects. We have projects that work on making the Internet grow. And we have other projects that work on ensuring the strength of the Internet. And then we have initiatives which are really about our community and things that we're doing within the organization. These are all things that we're going to talk about today. So first of all, we'll talk about the projects to do with growing the Internet. The first of these is building community networks. Community networks are efforts for alternative kinds of connectivity in places that are generally not well served by traditional connectivity answers. And so we have a number of these success measures. And as you can see, we're making some progress on all of them. So the first one was a goal of 10 new and existing community networks deployed, either through our direct engagement or through our partners. The aim of those was 10, and so far we've managed to do seven. So we believe that we're pretty much on track in order to achieve this in 2021. Similarly, we wanted to work on countries because, generally speaking, one of the barriers to a lot of community networks has to do with spectrum regulation. And so far, so far, we have so far managed to make changes in four of the countries that we were intending, three of them in the last quarter. The the total for the year is we're aiming at is is five. So we believe that we're in good shape for this. We also have a lot of work to do with training the community to make sure that the community actually can can achieve these things. Obviously, you can't have a community network without an effective community. So we are aiming at 300 individuals trained. We're just a little under half of them. There are more trainings planned for Q3 and Q4. So we believe that this will be successful this year. So far, we have not talked about the leaders. We have not done that work yet. That is all scheduled for the second half of the year. Finally, we have this work that we're doing with new partners. So it's generally the case that the Internet Society cannot work on its own. Instead, we need to work through partners and other organizations, various groups of people who work with us. We signed a new partnership with UNESCO in in the second quarter of this year. And so far this year, we have managed to work with four of the five on target for the year. So we believe that this is on track for the year as well. The next project is the project Fostering Infrastructure and Community Development. This has really two components. One is infrastructure, particularly internet exchange points, but not only that. And the second part is the community around those internet exchange points. It's no use having a big internet exchange point if you don't have a group of people there to to operate it. And so we we work on both things at the same time. So the first of these was working on new and existing internet exchange points. We want to make sure that these are in in good shape. So the aim was to get five new IXP's in the course of the year and to work with 15 existing ones in the course of the year. So far this year, we've managed to start with three new IXP's. And we believe that there are a couple more that are coming within the year. So we anticipate that we will achieve this goal. We we have worked with eight of the of the IXP's that we were already working with. And we continue to to work with new ones. We think that this is going to going to be successful, but we still have some work to do to to connect with some of the IXP's that that are out there that that, you know, maybe can use our help. This is a little bit more difficult due to the ongoing pandemic restrictions. And so that is one of the things that is possibly a drag on this. But at the moment, we believe that we're on on track for this. We also entered into a number of partnerships and we we track that as well. Our goal was to either continue or to start five partnerships. We've already achieved eight this year. So this is a goal that is well and truly in hand. We wanted to work on the number of people taking the net ops training. We had an original target of 500 people. This has been enormously successful. The 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 training and e-learning part of the organization is, as you know, ramped up, ramping up this year. There's new work going on within that and a new a new learning management system that just went live. So we've had more than twice as many people have taken the this course as as we aimed for. So it's really been a very, very successful, successful effort so far. And what this means, of course, is that we're we're going to be able to continue to expand that that outreach. And that outreach develops the communities who can build the Internet themselves in their locations. Finally, we have on this slide, we have this number of countries that are engaged to support IXP's through their policies. And this is actually an important thing. A lot of countries are suspicious of of internet exchange points or they want to control them. They don't want them to be neutral. And we were working with countries in order to make sure that the policies do not discourage this kind of development because it is really, really good for local access to have internet exchanges within within various geographic and political boundaries. So we we aimed to work with five such countries. So far, we've managed to work with four this year. There was one engagement that is notable with the government of Kuwait. So we find that we're we're having positive effects within the government realm as well. The last project in this in this area is measuring the Internet. This is our measurement platform, which used to be called Insights, but we've rebranded that as Pulse. So that's still on here noted as the as one of the activities that I'm that we undertook this year. Version two of this platform is is targeted for this year. So the the platform initially launched only a year ago. We, you know, we knew that it was a sort of an early version. We're going to have version two of it. That is on track, on track. We were working away, but of course, we haven't actually delivered the new the new code yet. We need, we're not actually doing the measuring. And this is an important part of this project. That what this really is, is a sort of clearinghouse of existing measurement sources that are that are in the world. And so we're trying to to work with with others. And we we need partnerships in order to do that. The goal for this year was three. We've got two of them so far. So we're we're working away. We believe we're going to have another data source in in Q3. And if that happens, then we'll we'll hit this target easily. We've got two new focus areas intended intended for the year. We worked on it in this year, but we haven't actually done any of this. We haven't launched these yet. So so far, that is at zero, but that's because the the release of them is is slated for later in the year. The next area for projects is strengthening the Internet. And the first of these is promoting the Internet way of networking. It's important to remember that there are lots of ways to build networks. You can build a network in a very centralized way. You can build a network in a in a way built built on treaties, just as the telephone system worked. But the Internet way of networking is to use the open, globally connected, secure and trustworthy Internet and connect things using the voluntary measures that are are the hallmark of the way that the Internet is built. And so that's what this is about. We promote this way of networking because we believe that this delivers the best value for everybody in the world. It it has given us all of the marvels that the Internet has brought to us. And so we continue to to promote this. We're we're engaged with external entities, that includes chapters, who produce additional use cases with this framework. So we have a framework, we released it, and we're continuing to refine it. But that framework was released last year, and we're continuing to push people to do this. We aimed to have five external entities working with this framework and using it and developing it themselves. So far, we've had two. But we have had, we've had some success, particularly with two chapters who have picked this up and really worked hard with it. We also have a training course that we continued continue to push. And we were aiming to train 200 people on this, on this framework. It's a, you know, it's a it's a sort of specialist topic. So it's not a huge number of people, but it's also a very small community. And so we were aiming for 200. We've so far managed to train 169 people on this. This was the, this was the enrollment. We haven't had a completion rate because that feature is missing. We will have it in the future. So we don't exactly know how many people have completed the course, but we've had 169 enrollments so far. Another project has to do with extending encryption. Encryption, of course, is really important to the Internet because without encryption, you can't have certain kinds of security. And this is security against tampering with with flows of data. It's also security of the data within it. And so we're working very hard with a lot of partners to extend encryption and to get people to understand what an advantage and boon encryption is to everybody on the Internet. The first target that we had was to grow the Global Encryption Coalition membership. We set this this coalition up with some other partners last year, and we've had quite a lot of success. The target for the year was to add 200 new members. We're already, we've already added 180 people. The Internet Society Latin American and Caribbean chapters have mostly joined. It's it's a steady pace each quarter. So we we are confident that this is a goal that can be can be met. We've also done some training of people on encryption and advocacy, and we've already exceeded our target for the year on this. We anticipate that there will probably be some more. This is really a fundamentals kind of issue. And this is really the the goal that we have. Finally, we've got this extension of the reach. We want to to reach a lot of people with this message. So we're aiming to reach a million people on this year. And so far, we've only reached 4,500. So this is, this will seem like a low number. We believe, however, that we're still on track to achieve this because we have Global Encryption Day that is coming in in October. And we anticipate that that will be the, you know, where most of the of the audience comes from. So we're still optimistic about this and believe that we will achieve it. The next project is securing global routing. This is related to the Manners Project. A Manners is intended to be an independent organization that allows interested parties to gather together in order to ensure mutually accepted norms for routing security. And so we have a number of success measures for this. The first is an increase in route origin authorization creation by the existing Manners participants. So we want participants to to increase their use of ROAs. ROAs are the mechanism by which you indicate that somebody is authorized to originate routes for your IP range. The idea here was to increase this by 10%. We've already got better than that, so we've achieved this. The other part of 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 route origin authorization, the other part that you need, of course, is validation of those things. And so what we want to do is make sure that existing managed participants start to do this. And our target for this year was about 5%. This is, we think it's on, it's on track, but we we don't know exactly whether this is going to be possible because it's hard to measure. So we're working on the measurement. We think we've got a plan. We believe it's on track, but we don't have anything that's actually operating yet. We're, we're also hoping to to see greater conformance improvement from from before people join the Manners Project. So the early days of Manners, a lot of the people who joined were actually very, very well operated networks. They, you know, they generally didn't have problems and so on. And and people were, you know, keen not to join if they if they weren't not up to stuff. Some of the people we're attracting now are are less capable on or have been less capable. And what we're doing is, you know, through the community, making, you know, making improvements in their networks. And so what we see are people who, you know, three months before they join, they're at one level, and then we evaluate three months after and see what their conformance improvement is. And we've got about 30% here so far. In Q2, we had about 37% in ROI use. So this seems to be our, you know, a real improvement. There've only been two Bogan incidents among members in 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 Q2. So that was really good. In Q1, there were none. So on the whole, I think this is, this is achieved, and we hope to continue on this pace. Finally, as I mentioned, this is supposed to become a community operated operated service. It's something that the community desires to do independently. And so the question is, is the community ready to do that? And we want to make sure that they're ready. This year, we've completed a community consultation on this. We've also got a charter ready to go. So we believe that, in fact, the community is ready to do this. We still have to work out some details of of the organizational structure, whether this is going to be a disregarded entity inside the Internet Society or whether it will be an independent nonprofit or or so forth. So that's still to be, that's still a detail to be worked out. But on the whole, we believe that this is on track. We also have a number of of activities that are not exactly projects in that they don't, they don't have an end, right? The the goal of projects is really to have a beginning, and then you do some work and you measure that in the middle. And then when you're finished with that, when you've met all your goals, the project is is completed, and then you can move on to another project. Other kinds of activities that the Internet Society does are not really like that. They're initiatives, they get things started, and then, you know, that activity continues and continues to operate. Or they're simple operational things that we have to do that ensure that our community is lively and in good shape. And that's what the rest of these are about. So the first of these has to do with supporting community participation. And the first of those is the engagement of individual members. So we're we're trying to improve the individual member, the individual member experience at the Internet Society. So what we wanted to do was increase it. We know, we know that the, we have to start with a baseline. So this is going to take a little bit of time. So far, what we've got is this baseline of 5,000. We want to increase the number of individual members participating in our activities. And our our aim here is 5,000 individual members. So far this year, we've had 3,214. So we believe that we're on on track to to achieve this because, of course, that's that's more than half of our goal. If we can achieve this baseline, then we'll be able to build in the future. We've also been working on improving the fundamental information we provide to our chapters. So we want to make sure, for instance, that chapter members are trained in our mission. For 2021, we had a a plan of 500 chapter members who would who would participate in this. We've had 526 unique participants in in these trainings. So, you know, we have achieved this. What is not clear is how many, how many different chapters were involved. So of course, multiple people from the same chapter all count in this in this total. And we're pretty sure that it's it's a wide variety of chapters, but we're we're actually currently working on that. So I don't have that answer for you right now. We also want chapters to implement an activity. And we want that activity to be related to the mission. So the goal here is to say, okay, how many of the participating chapters that were involved in this, how many of them were then created an activity locally that was in line with with the training? So the deadline for submission of these activities was extended. It was extended at the beginning of the month. So we haven't updated this because I don't have the answers yet. But we believe this is on track. We've had very, very good response from chapters. So we believe that this is on track. We've also tackled the issue of special interest groups at the Internet Society. This has been a longstanding problem. The way that the special interest groups, they were originally structured as sort of similar to chapters, but because they're not in a place, they didn't have bank accounts, it was all very complicated. So we're trying to try to fix that. And so we have this plan to have a new structure in place by the end of 2021 and then ready to operate in in 2022. This is ongoing. We believe that it's in progress. We believe we will be ready by the by the end of the year. In order to, in order to make this new plan work, we need topics, particular topics that are going to be identified by the community. The plan is basically that the community will will have five special interest groups that it picks every two years. And so that's the, that's the way that this is going to work. So we've got to identify those topics. And so we need to identify those topics for 2022. We need to do that now in order to, in order to be ready to run in 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 2022. And we're working on it. It appears that things are in good shape. We've had a lot of topics submitted. So we want to get five. We had 123 submissions. So this is going to involve quite a bit of work in order to to pare this down. The the goal has been to keep the number manageable because, you know, it's it's a lot of work to manage a whole lot of these things. The way this is going to end up working is that instead of the special interest group having to operate independently the way chapters do, they will be folded inside the Internet Society, and there'll be an Internet Society activity, very much the way the IETF used to work. So for for that reason, we want to keep the numbers relatively small because we don't have a huge staff that can look after this. 123 is definitely too many. It might be that five is too few, and we might have to, we might have to accept that. I would like it to stay around five because I don't think that much more than that is really manageable. But given the community response, it's pretty clear that there's a wide variety of things that people want to do. So we believe that this is going to be selected. We'll get, we'll get this buttoned up by the end of the year. We also want to have a growth in the ISOC members who participate in this consultation. So it's really important, actually, that, you know, this not be a tiny group of people who all have the, who are all talking to each other. What we really want is is this to be a vibrant part of the Internet Society community and to make sure that individual members really take the, take advantage of this benefit of membership. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we've got a baseline number that we set in in 2021, and then we can make that grow in the future. So obviously, the the consultation is going to close. It it has closed. In fact, it's it closed on the 12th of July. So we'll know what that number is by the end of the year, and we will have this baseline. We also want to strengthen community connections. So we want to improve our software. Some of our software has been problematic for the community, and we recognize that. And so what we're trying to do is is fix this. We we had a a big consultation that we've been trying to, trying to work on in order to improve this software. We wanted to talk to people. We wanted, you know, 80% of our community to be consulted on this. There have been very wide consultations with chapters, with org members and individual members that have been contacted. We think we're going to get to 80%. This isn't, this is scheduled to be completed by the end of the month. So we don't actually know yet whether we're done and whether we achieve that. But we'll, we'll know what the number is, you know, before the middle, before the end of the year, for sure. We want to select the vendor this year. We want to do it by the 31st of August. So that's a tight timeline because the consultation's finished in July. We want to, we want to select some vendors based on the criteria by the end of August. So that's really the plan. The whole thing, we want to get going. We want to have a complete implementation plan scheduled ready by the 31st of October. And that will mean, of course, that then that will give us the planning necessary in order to do the implementation next year. So this is not, of course, started because we really need to work on the vendor selection first in order to, in order to start this. We've been working very hard on content to improve our content this year. Content has been traditionally a little bit of a problem at the Internet Society. We have too much content on too many topics. It's very difficult to find things. And so what we're trying to do is is whittle this down in a way so that the audience can be satisfied, they can understand this, and they can say, oh, yes, this is, this is good. So the big target on here is measuring the content, the the audience satisfaction. So that's really the the big first problem. We have to understand what the audience is, what they want, and how satisfied they are. We're about 40% of the way through this. And then we will have a picture of what the audience satisfaction rate is. And then, of course, we can tell whether it gets better. The other thing that we want to do is is really make sure that the things that are on our website are really strategically aligned with our strategic objectives and with our content strategy. So the goal is to make sure that 50% of our web content is actually related to the things we say we're working on. There are reasons why content might not be aligned. For instance, it might be aligned to something that we had in the past. It might be, it might be, you know, things that are just legal requirements, for instance, or 990s, that's part of our content on our website. They're never going to be strategically aligned with us in the sense that, you know, they're they're a report. But what we want is 50% of our of our content is really about our topic. And so far, the analysis of this is, it is, we're through at 40%. So we looked at 40% of the content to do the evaluation of this. That's, that's where we are in the progress. We think that this will be done by the end of the year. What this is going to involve is a fairly aggressive archiving strategy afterwards. And this will mean that, you know, we will put in tombstones and so on for content, not that it is removed, but we'll, we'll put in redirections so that it goes into the archive on site instead. And that way, we can keep the live website active on on the the current things, and we can put archives off to the side of of content that is, you know, not necessarily up to date, maybe not relevant today, maybe not the things that that people are looking for. This will improve the experience of users on the site because they will be able to find the information that they're looking for, and they will be able to be connected to the activities that we're currently working on. We also need to build the expertise and capacity of the organization in order to do all of this support. And so that's the this category of measure. We've been trying to make sure that we have good training for the community. And you will recall that last year, in the budget request, well, those of you who are here will recall that we had this fairly large board designated fund for training and e-learning activities. That is what we're delivering on right now. And that's what this is all about measuring. So we've had, we aimed to have 30 online learning activities this year. We've managed to do 33 already. So and we we do all of these in all three of our supported languages. So this means that we're doing a lot of a lot of work to make sure that this is happening. In in the first quarter of the year, we only offered courses in English. So we've, we've had to undertake a lot of translation. So that lowered demand in the first quarter. But we've, we find that we've actually had a lot of uptake on this. We want to reach 10,000 people with our training this year. And so far, we've reached 3,511. But the number of courses is expanding. And also, we have the new platform that we have just launched. So there were some courses that were not developed and were not released into the old platform because we didn't want to put effort into a platform. We were, we knew we were shutting down. So the new platform has has launched. It is much more dynamic. It is, it has better measurement techniques in it. So we will be able to offer even more courses. So we believe we're on track with this, even though that isn't, you know, we're halfway through the year and we're not 50% of the way there. We wanted 90% of the people who took these things and rated the course. We wanted 90% of them to to give, you know, to have a high value. What we've had instead is 95% rating. So we've had overall course satisfaction. This is only in the Q1 courses. All of the data hasn't been tabulated for Q2 yet. We also wanted some partners to help on our on our revenue generation. So the goal with the with the learning activities is that it become a self-supporting activity, that it becomes self-sustaining. And that does not mean, of course, that everybody who takes a course has to pay us for it. There are lots of ways to make things sustaining, and one of those is sponsorship. And so we needed some partners who would help us with that. Our goal was to get two partners who would who would help us with that. And we have, in fact, managed to sign up two two partners, including the Organization of American States, who who just, who signed up in this quarter. So we believe that we're on track in this. Not all of the agreements have been signed, but we believe that we're, we're going to get there. We also want to prepare future Internet advocates. So in the past, we had a fellowship program that some of you will remember. We thought didn't actually have clear measurable goals. What what were these fellows doing? And so we decided to redesign the fellowship program, and we we broke it into two parts. One for early career people and another one for mid-career people. The early career fellowship activity was to be launched this year. That was achieved in the first quarter. And we wanted to make sure, of course, that we got a baseline established for the number in each. So we established that we're going to have 164 candidates. So we established, um, that we're going to, uh, have a hundred and sixty four candidates. We got a hundred and sixty four candidates. And so this is in progress, um, because the fellowship is now running. We also wanted the, um, the, the plan for the mid-career fellowship, uh, to be, to be built. So we're not launching this fellowship this year. We just wanted the plan, uh, to be developed. That has happened, uh, so, um, this is, this is now, um, you know, rolling ahead. And then finally, again, we need partners to help us, um, uh, support this because this is an expensive activity and, uh, we can't pay for it all ourselves. So we need to make sure that we've got partners, uh, who are involved. The other reason, of course, we want partners to be involved is because if you have partners involved in a project, uh, then you are sure that, you know, this is an activity that is valuable to, to those other people. So we don't do it all ourselves. We're not off in some echo chamber. And our goal was to secure four partners for that, but we've already got five signed up. We've also had four, uh, four sponsors, uh, who are helping us to pay for it, but are not, um, are not actually participating in the activity. Uh, and that's also a very good sign because what that means is that people think what we're doing is valuable. We're trying to foster information, information exchange among researchers. And this is a, a, a goal that we share with the foundation. The foundation, of course, does this, um, by, uh, by direct, um, funding of, um, of researchers. What we try to do is ensure that the collaboration space is available. And we do this primarily through the Networking Distributed Systems Security Symposium, or NDSS. This year it had to go online, um, uh, and, uh, but our goal was to make sure that we continued uh, to have NDSS ranked in the top five. That ranking hasn't been announced yet, so we don't know. Um, but we're, uh, we're cautiously optimistic, um, because we had a very successful program this year. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that we have a collaboration between the research community and the open standards community. One of the reasons that we want to participate in this is, of course, not just because it's a nice activity. It is a good activity on its own, but research without, uh, effect is, is perhaps less valuable. So we're trying to make sure that there is a collaboration between people who are, who are researchers and the people who are building the open standards. This year, we wanted to aim for one of those, one such collaboration. We haven't achieved it yet, but we believe that we probably will. We need to, in order to do all of this, we have to secure resources. The organization needs to have money and people, a community of, uh, of engaged people, uh, to help us, uh, to help us do that. And that's what this is about. Our first big issue, of course, is, um, diverse revenue sources. This is a longstanding issue. The Internet Society gets a lot of money from one source and that is not really a healthy thing for the organization. So we want to make sure that we don't have that kind of problem. Um, so what we're trying to do, first of all, is have, uh, uh, active memoranda of understanding with partners, engage them with, um, various projects and so on. This makes sure that the projects are viable and that they are, um, are, you know, diverse in, in, in how they are funded. Uh, we wanted to aim for fifty such, uh, memoranda of understanding. We've got thirty eight so far. Uh, so we, you know, we think we're going to be in pretty, a pretty good shape. We've got some, uh, some new partners, both in Q one and Q two. So we believe that this is, um, probably, um, active. We've been looking for new sources of funding, um, and, and, and securing those sources of funding. We wanted to make sure that we got ten new sources of funding. Uh, we've so far managed to get eight, so I believe that this, um, this is really on track. The revenue target that we have for this is a five hundred thousand dollars. So we want half a million dollars, um, uh, in, uh, from these, uh, sources of revenue. So far, uh, we have managed to raise one hundred and thirty nine thousand eight hundred dollars. So we're not really halfway there. Nevertheless, we believe that some of the activities that are coming in the latter half of the year are probably sort of places where we're going to find a lot of, um, a, a lot of support. So we think that this is on track, but, um, I recognize that, you know, if you look at that, that target number and the, uh, and the progress number and you look at the calendar, you think, well, this isn't really on track. Uh, I believe it is, but that's mostly because some of the activities that are coming later in the year are really some of the opportunities that will allow us to get closer to this goal. So I hope that this gives you a pretty good picture of what's going on within the Internet Society, that you have an idea of, of how the activities are and how we're meeting our, our targets for the year. Uh, we will update you again when the year is over, um, because that way you will know, um, how we're doing on these things. Thank you very much. And I look forward to any questions that trustees may have at the meeting.
Hello, everyone. I'm Renalia Abdurahim, Senior Vice President for Strategy, Communications and Engagement at ISOC. This is a presentation for the ISOC Board of Trustees about the findings from our consultation with the ISOC community regarding priorities for the two zero twenty two action plan. Every year, as part of our planning process to produce the Internet Society Action Plan, staff would carry out a consultation with members of the ISOC community. The intention is to gather feedback about priorities for the upcoming year. The priorities are determined by the senior executive team and they are based on our longer term two zero twenty five strategic objectives that focus on building, promoting and defending the Internet. Having taken into consideration the broader Internet environment through trends analysis as well as progress achieved towards two zero twenty five targets, the Internet Society leadership determined that it would prioritize four strategic objectives for the year two zero twenty two. Number one, extend the Internet to communities that do not have it and need it most. Number two, promote the Internet model of networking as the preferred model. Number three, counter attempts by leading government to undermine encryption. And number four, defend against shutdowns by increasing cross-border connectivity and resiliency. Our community members were invited to take an online survey. In addition, top-tier organization members were invited to a one-on-one consultation meeting. Via the community consultation, our community members were asked three questions. How important to you are each of the two zero twenty two priorities? How likely are you to become involved in the two zero twenty two priorities? And are you already doing work related to the priorities? And if so, which ones? The purpose of asking these questions is to understand community alignment on the priorities and to identify opportunities for collaboration that would enhance our collective impact on the Internet where staff are working with community to achieve this impact. The results gained from the responses would inform the design of two zero twenty two projects and initiatives by Internet Society staff. So the survey spent three weeks. It went out to all our community members who were contactable. There are more, but they chose not to be contactable. It had a blend of qualitative and quantitative response types and the survey was done in three languages, English, French and Spanish. The exception is that the organization members received the English version only. The survey required authentication for the first time to improve data integrity to support better analysis. Quantitative data was analyzed according to community segment and region, and this is standard practice for us. Also, qualitative data was analyzed for common phrasing, unique themes and emerging patterns. So here's the response rate. We received five hundred and nine responses from individual members. That's less than one percent of total recipient, but it's actually better than last year's response rate. We also received seven responses from organization members. That's eight percent of total recipients in that category. In terms of regional breakdown of respondents, Africa had the most respondents and Middle East had the least. This is consistent with the global distribution of our overall membership. Europe and North America were the only regions represented by organization members, which is where a combined sixty nine percent of organization members are based. And so we come to the findings of the consultation. Finding number one, individual members regard the priorities as important and they are likely to become involved. Finding number two, organization members regard the priorities as important as well, but they are not as likely as individual members, members to become involved. And here's finding number three, our community is already doing interesting work related to the priorities. Thirty six percent of individual member respondents are already doing work related to at least one of the priorities and fifty seven percent of organization member respondents are already doing work related to at least one of the priorities. Other takeaways. Overall, respondents find all four priorities to be important. Individual and organization members find extend as the most important and promote as the least important. Overall, our community is already involved or wants to become involved in our priorities. Although individual members were least likely to become involved with extend, it is the priority for which the highest percentage of individual members are currently doing work at twenty four percent. In terms of promote, there is lack of clarity about the Internet model of networking. Many survey respondents asked for clearer description. And this survey was the first use of authentication in a survey to community members. The extra step needed to provide feedback may have affected the response rate. And now we go into the findings of whether respondents believe the priorities are important to them. It's just a slight elaboration of what you had just heard in terms of the findings. On how important to you are each of the following priorities for two zero twenty two? For individual members, the results are extremely positive with eighty percent and above finding each priority to be extremely or very important. For individual members, most important priority is extend, least important priority is promote. For organization members, the results indicate that they align with our priorities with promote as the outlier. The most important priority is a three-way tie between extend, counter and defend, and the least important priority is promote. And now we go into the findings on whether respondents are likely to get involved in the priorities area of work. And again, it is just a slight elaboration of what you had just heard earlier. On how likely are you to become involved in the two zero twenty two priorities? For individual members, overall, they are interested in becoming involved with nearly the same level of interest across priorities. They are most likely to become involved in counter and least likely to become involved in extent. For organization members, overall, the results indicate organization members are more likely to be involved in extend and counter. Promote is the outlier. They are most likely to become involved in extend or counter. It's a two-way tie and least likely to become involved in promote. And here's the key findings on work already being done and you had already heard the statistics. Thirty six percent of individual members are already doing work related to the priorities. Most of them are working on extend and they are least working on promote. Work already being done by organization members, fifty seven percent of respondents are already working or involved in areas related to the priorities. And now we come to the key themes from open-ended responses and this is where it gets quite interesting. Now, these comments are highlighted by the analysis team as most frequently mentioned or popular among the respondents. The differing points of view within our community on aspects of extend, promote, counter and defend are key reflection points and need to be discussed among staff, particularly the points about the Internet model. There is also this doubt in the community among some members that ISOC may not be able to make much of a difference in connectivity in extending the Internet to communities that need it most. And I think that requires a discussion. Under counter, which is countering the, um, efforts of leading government encountering encryption, there are various points of view in terms of how that needs to be done. And also under defend, there are also various points of view from the community on how that should be approached. And here we come to key findings from organization members in the top two tiers. Four organization members participated in the one-on-one consultation. They are Ripe NCC, Donut slash Affilius, this is how they usually refer to themselves when they representative, when their representative are participating in our, in our meetings, Ericsson and Amazon. Here are the key findings from the one-on-one consultations with organization members. The four organization members had mostly positive reactions to the priorities. They want more than the action plan process or consultations as a feedback mechanism and they prefer two-way discussions between the Internet Society and its members. In their view, the action plan should be where ISOC designs its priorities with its members. Ripe NCC acknowledges that it needs to address the impacts Internet policy and regulations have on its organization and members. And this ties in with what, um, the Internet Society is working on. Donut is focusing on DNS security and Internet abuse and sees opportunities for ISOC to grow in that space. They are also looking to build synergy, have more interactions and discussions and listening sessions between members and the Internet Society. Ericsson would like to have more clarity on the Internet Society's project narratives and scope of work to get buy-in from management, maintain ISOC membership and create opportunities for future collaboration. And finally, Amazon would like to explore more collaboration between the Internet Society and their Amazon Quiper team on growing the globally connected Internet. In terms of organization member priorities, the four participating organization members also shared their corporate priorities that are in line with ISOC's two zero twenty two priorities and you can see them on this slide. And finally, we reached the appendix, which contains the email that was sent to the ISOC community by our CEO Andrew Sullivan regarding the two zero twenty two priorities. And this is the end of the consultation findings report. Thank you for listening and I look forward to discussions with the board on the action plan two zero twenty two priorities.
Good morning, afternoon, evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. Um, first of all, a very warm welcome to our incoming board members. I'm looking forward to seeing you soon. And a heartfelt thank you to our, um, outgoing board members as well. In this presentation today, I will talk you through a proposal for changes to the individual membership model, um, along with the prerequisites, uh, dependencies, as well as a roadmap for implementing the proposed changes. This proposal is an iteration from a previous one that was presented to the board in two zero twenty and incorporates the feedback provided by the board at that time. Before diving in, let me be, give you a little bit of context and some of the background. So in two zero twenty, um, the presentation to the board, we presented options for a paid individual membership by offering dedicated new services. And the feedback we received at the time was that we needed to reassess the proposition and not create any additional products or services to recruit individual members. That complex membership structures that would require expensive governance and compliance, um, operationalization should be avoided. And that, and finally, that an initial focus should be on, uh, increasing participation and engagement of members. Since then, the community engagement team has focused on identifying and carrying out some quick win improvements to the current membership experience. Whilst we were carrying out some further, um, consultations and assessments to revise the proposition for individual membership. The main changes that we carried out, um, have included an improved member join experience, the implementation of better member support by deploying, uh, fresh desk ticketing system to improve handling and tracking of inquiries and requests from our members, an improved newsletter, which I hope you all, uh, have seen and, and are receiving, uh, which is also improving our communication experience. The, and lastly, the implementation of analytics and feedback loops to constantly improve communication in general, but, um, newsletters in particular, um, and content going forward. One thing we, um, really focused our efforts on was to listen to our members and to really get a better understanding of our current membership base, their needs, but also to comparatively looking at, um, understanding our membership model. So a couple of things have happened to, uh, address this. So last December, we conducted a community communication audit. Um, this audit has highlighted the need for better planned and coordinated approach to, uh, community communication, including to our members. And as a result of this, we've improved internal coordination, but also the planning of email communication to our members and chapters. Since January, um, we are consulting our memberships through a number of channels. One is a quantitative survey, which, uh, was launched in, uh, was conducted in January. One is a quantitative survey, which was launched in, was conducted in January and which is currently being complemented with qualitative interviews that are actually happening just as I, as I record this, this presentation. We also conducted a benchmarking research and landscape analysis to look at other membership structures. We're finalizing the reports, but already some of the findings are reflected in, in this proposal. As you probably have seen, at least I hope you've seen, we also updated our data privacy program, which is currently in consultation phase with our chapters. And these changes will allow for better communication with members. We also did the initial analysis of the prerequisite of joining global membership before being able to join a chapter. There's lots of dependencies with the data privacy program, so we will share this with you and with the community probably September, October timeframe. So after the completion of the, the data privacy policy updates. So this is high level where we are today. I'd like now to take you to the proposed strategy going forwards, as well as the proposed model. So I wanted to start with actually looking at what the issues are that we're actually trying to solve. So what we see is that we don't really have a cohesive community as such, but rather a lot of individuals in our database. So Internet Society currently has nearly eighty thousand global members, but many current members have signed up because membership is a prerequisite qualification for other programs or processes. With, with an unclear value proposition for incoming members, we're currently unable to offer really a positive experience that fosters that feeling of community and, and creates this community that is engaged with our mission, but also with each other in pursuit of that mission. So the lack of a clear value proposition also reflects in the lack of an organized and coordinated cross-team approach to the membership base. So we see that current interactions with individuals, with individual members in particular, are not coordinated across the teams, which results in, in patchy engagements that doesn't really build up on previous engagements to deliver consistent community experience. Often, there's also no real differentiation between a member and what we could call an unidentified audience or, or, or non-members, basically. So based on that, let me take you what their mission statement really is for individual membership. We're looking at creating an engaged and vibrant global movement of motivated members that help Internet Society achieve its goals. Now, how do we get there? Internet Society has a great and inspiring mission. We hear that a lot in the feedbacks that we've done through the survey, but now also through the, through the interview sessions. The work we do really makes a difference globally, and people see that, that it makes a difference in people's lives, members recognize that. And because of that, or I should say, thanks to that, we already attract a wide range of people globally. What we do see is that through several consultations done over the past few years, including the one earlier this year, the individual members have repeated the same expectation again and again and again. They desire more engagement and involvement with Internet Society and with our work. It is contingent on Internet Society to provide our members with the right conditions, but also the right spaces and real opportunities to engage with our work as well as with each other. So the outcome we're looking for is a membership base that feels genuinely connected to our mission with a community that helps each other and is ready to contribute to Internet Society's projects, initiatives, and ultimately also revenue. Now, to get to the outlined mission statements, we outlined the goals for membership. And so we're looking at keeping the membership base informed, motivated, and interested in Internet, in Internet Society's work. To change the passive engagement to active engagement and meaningful engagement. To match members to peers on topics or themes of mutual interest. To match members to Internet Society's work that is of interest to them. To help various Internet Society teams achieve their goals and targets. And important to note that at this stage, we're looking mostly at engaging current members, and so that recruitment is really a secondary goal. To achieve these goals, we'll need to provide a number of benefits. The main promise is really a curated, tailored, and service-oriented experience. We need to provide a great community features that allow for easy discovery of and interaction with like-minded people. We need to have a two-way conversational engagement with member and not just talking at members, but really listen to and actually have a two-way engagement setup. We need to deliver content and interactions specifically tailored to men, to members. And we need to create opportunities to contribute to Internet Society's work. So that is looking at volunteer engagements, but also looking at how people can contribute at local level to Internet Society's work. In terms of model, we actually recommend to have a free membership. Now, we had discussions, we looked at options of paid membership, as we discussed it in, in the last board meeting in two zero twenty, but there's a number of reasons for which we came back from that. So paid membership plans raise expectations of services and products that has exclusivity and premium attached to them. So taking the board's feedback into, into consideration, creation of new products and services were not really an option. And so simply putting a paid wall to information, content, or features that are currently available for free would not be received well by our community. Another option that we looked at is to offer discounts on value, or on value-added services, like for example, training courses or have paid member-only courses. However, what this would mean is that we would have a quite a heavy reliance on other teams to deliver what the paid members would value, and that would affect the main goals of those teams. So the other challenge we saw for paid membership is that our volumes actually don't justify the investment. So setting up a paid membership model comes with a high initial cost that would include additional personnel on top of what will be needed for a free membership model to provide service, to provide support to paid members. It would imply additional costs for handling payments, renewals, transactions, account management. And it will also include overheads for processes like compliance and cost attribution. So the, the additional resources would not only be on the community engagement side, but also from other teams like finance, collaborative systems, IT, legal. So it would actually increase the, the resource cost quite extensively. And based on the current level of our membership base, it would be very difficult to break even and making this profitable. Making this profitable. So our conclusion and recommendation is to have a simple offer of free membership, which in turn, we can then use as a resource to help other Internet Society teams achieve their goals. Free membership still creates the need and an expectation of certain membership benefits. If not, there's no reason for members to actually join. So we looked at the needs and wants of members and have organized those along four categories, which would cover the interest of a wide variety of target audiences. And that is really what, together, that actually articulates the value proposition for membership. We then looked at existing features to offer, and even if some may need to be tailored to the membership audience, they would not require heavy benefit or feature developments as advised by the board last year. So the four benefit buckets, as I can, if I can call them like that, are creating a sense of community and a sense of belonging, features and efforts for members to connect, collaborate, exchange, and learn from peers with similar interests and passion to create a sense of belonging. On the slides, as well as in the written documents, you will be able to find some examples of, of the features that actually we are considering under each of those benefits. The second benefit is delivery of curated, relevant, and timely content for the individual member community. The third bucket is opportunities to participate and contribute to movements that creates impact for the good of the Internet. And last but not least, opportunities that would help individual members improve their career prospects. And so while recruitment is not the main priority, I still wanted to touch upon who our target audience for membership would be, as that will define the makeup and the level of engagement of our individual community. So our primary target audience for membership and for the membership team would be those who are already interested in Internet Society's work, that are already persuaded by what we are doing and that are showing high levels of interest and/or engagement. And so we will rely on the marketing and communications teams to increase awareness on, of Internet Society's work. May people interested in Internet Society's work attract them to the touchpoints and increase their engagement there before we then would target them for conversion to individual membership. Now, concretely, where do we start? So we recommend to keep the focus on, of individual membership program to activities that provide a smooth member join experience that links up with the prospect's journey before they sign up as members. So before they start the signing up process. We are also recommending activities that are tailored onboarding experience to help newly signed-up members immediately connect with the organization and their area of interest, but also to ensure alignment. We see that a lot of our current members, actually, there's, I wouldn't say misalignment, but there's a bit of finding out where they fit and, and how they align, how their desires of actually making an impact really align with Internet Society's mission and goals. We would then look at a personalized experience on the online member engagement platform, which is currently called Connect. We would foster the communities within the community with a steady stream of content, high-quality engagement, and opportunities for them to contribute. Again, this is volunteer opportunities or ways to engage in, in the work that is already planned by the Internet Society staff. A committed effort to animate and to support the community and a constant analysis of member activity and preferences to drive continued improvements of the, the features and the benefits that we outlined. What we'll need for this program to meet its objectives and to be successful is clear ownership of individual membership experience. And so we strongly recommend that this be fully mandated to the community engagement team to drive the community engagement to champion the needs of individual members within the Internet Society to coordinate with the various Internet Society teams to deliver engagement and content to the members. It's imperative that the whole organization is behind it and that, that everybody supports this initiative. We will need the commitment from all dependent teams at Internet Society to provide resources, material, engagement opportunities for members. It's really a, an, an all-hands-on-deck initiative. The, there will of course to be the need for tools and systems with high levels of automation to reduce manual interventions and task load. And I'll get into a good bit more detail a little bit later. This would also include data analysis and then staffing, of course, to support the individual members, membership community. Now, I mentioned the dependencies on all of Internet Society for this to be successful. This slide gives you a sense of what that means. I will not go through the detail. Here you have this information in the documents. I shared the PowerPoints and the Word documents. The, this is just to give you a sense of the types of dependencies that we will, we will face to deliver a great membership experience. Let me quickly touch as well on the resources that would be needed. So we are looking at, for to run the membership program successfully, we would need two full-time employees. Now, we looked at internally, actually reallocating, reallocating some stuff to support this. We have moved Stina Phillipsen already into the role of individual membership manager, and so she was very instrumental in, in implementing some of those low-hanging fruits improvements that I mentioned earlier. And then we will have Leah Kiesling, who will be relocated to individual membership. And so we will, we will look at how we can distribute her current tasks across the team or reprioritize some of those things. In terms of tools and systems, again, this is quite a detailed slide, but in essence, this identifies what we need to be able to, to do. And we have been and will continue to work very closely with the collaborative systems team to identify and implement the specific tools. Some of those are already in place. Some of them are part of the system upgrade project that Collaborative Systems is working on. And so we will, with them prioritize those systems accordingly. And last but not least, a high-level timeline for the rollout of the program. So the rest of two zero twenty-one will be dedicated to finalizing some of the research that will help us shape the benefits and features, define the system requirements, as I just mentioned, with collaborative systems, and frankly, just evaluating, mapping, and implementing some, some of the missing or some of the broken foundational processes related to membership. So we are, we're doing quite a thorough analysis in terms of compliance, but also in terms of your user experience and, and looking at some of the flows in terms of processes. So this is the, the end of the presentation. There's two slides here with some additional information that we pulled from the survey. I will let you look at that, at your, at your own, at your own, in your own time. But thank you for watching the recording, and I'm looking here, I'm looking forward to hearing your feedback and to see you all very soon. Thank you very much.
Good morning, good evening, good afternoon. My name is Sebastian Bedagamba. I'm the Vice President of External Engagement, and I would like to give you a brief on the new fellowship programs that we are running and about to run at the Internet Society. As a matter of background, in two zero nineteen, we conducted an assessment of our fellowship programs, and that resulted in the proposition of two new fellowship programs that would incorporate the ones that we were already running back then. And in two zero twenty, we consulted the community with a proposal for two new fellowships. One that is called now the Early Career Fellowship, was then called the Youth Fellowship, was renamed since then. And the second one, which is called the Mid-Career Fellowship. The Early Career Fellowship has already been launched. It's been running for a month now. And so far, it's, has been very successful. The Early Career Fellowship is scheduled to start in mid-two zero twenty-two, and the curriculum is being developed as we speak. The community liked the, the programs as, as we presented them, and the board approved both of them to, for execution. The Early Career Fellowship, the vision for the Early Career Fellowship is to empower the internet champions of tomorrow so they can contribute to the development of the Internet while they ensure that the Internet remains open, globally connected, secure, and trustworthy. We have basically three goals with, with this fellowship. One is capacity building, and we want to create the capacity in this internet champ, in this, for these internet champions. The, the, to empower, as a second goal, a cradle, a cradle of, of talented internet professionals that will represent the missions and ambition of the Internet Society. And to ensure that the next generation of internet champions know and embrace the principles of openness and collaboration, the internet way of working. In this graphic, you can see an idea of the four modules that we have divided the Early Career Fellowship. In the timeline, you can see that the onboarding started in, the week one for the fellowship started in June twenty eighth. And there is basically four modules that are being run. The fellows are now at the end of the first model, which is the Internet ecosystem, which is conducted by Dr. Laura DiNardis. There is a a second model coming after that, which is led by the Oxford Internet Institute. And it's a module on the internet way of thinking. Project management and advocacy is on, is to, skills that we want to learn them, to, to tell them, and for them to learn in the, in the third module. And the internet way of doing is something that we are conducting in conjunction with the, with Deepak Foundation is going to be the final model of the, of this fellowship. This, each of these fellowships consists of a cohort of fifteen fellows. So we are planning to run two cohorts a year, and for now, it's a hundred percent beard. So we are planning to run two cohorts a year and for now it's 100% beard. In order to deliver this first fellowship, the Early Career Fellowship, we have partnered with important institutions. I mentioned Dr. Laura DiNardis, the American University, the Oxford Internet Institute, Pyramid Learning and 89Up and Deepak Foundation. We have secured some sponsors like ICAN Broad, Big Trust, Elevate, Verizon. We are still waiting for more to come on board. And we have also been able to secure the support of guest speakers of many other organizations. You can see the pictures here of our first cohort of fellows, which started the Early Career Program. They were selected, there's 15 in each cohort, as I said before, and they were selected out of 164 candidates that submitted an application for this fund. I will give you some information about our fellows now. The majority of our fellows come from Asia and Africa, with some from the Americas in general. And they have, 53% of them are individual members of the Internet Society, 27% are chapter members, and the other 20% are either organizational members or non-members of the Internet Society until the moment they started this program. Forty-seven percent of them are female, 53% are male. And 87%, which means 13 out of 15 fellows are on an age range of 22, 29. The other two are over 30, but less than 39. You can see in these pictures where are they coming from in terms of the sector they work on, on the study. Forty percent of them are from civil society. And the second most important groups are the technical community and the business sector with 20% each. The majority of our fellows, one third of the fellows come from social sciences. And the majority, I mean, two thirds of them have a bachelor's degree and one quarter of them roughly have a master's degree. There are some comments positive that we could gather in these first weeks of the program. So you can say that all the fellows are very excited to be part of this program and looking forward to the outcome. And that's it for the Early Career Fellowship. I will give you some information about the incoming one, which is the Mid-Career Fellowship that is still in development and is going to be launched in 2022. We are developing the program at this moment. We, in the final two months of 2021, we will develop the content and prepare for the program to be launched. And we will launch the program in February, in the February-April 2022 timeframe with an application call and a selection process. And we plan to start, actually start the program in May or June in 2022. With that, I would like to thank you for your time. And I will be at your disposal if, in case there is any comments or questions. Thank you very much and I'll give you all my best.
Hey everyone. My name is Kristi Mason, Head of Marketing Communications.
And I'm James Wood, Head of Content Communications. We're both very pleased to have the opportunity to talk to you about what we are doing collectively to build and strengthen the Internet Society's reputation. We know that some new board members may not have all of the context for this work. But we've tried to strike a balance in the following slides between an appropriate level of scene setting and a current view of where we are today in our plans. And we hope you find this presentation helpful. And of course, we look forward to answering your questions during the forthcoming meeting.
Thank you, James. So last year felt sort of like this photo here. There was the tidal wave of negativity around the proposed sale of PIR that was happening amidst a global pandemic and the Black Lives Matter movement. The pandemic and the civil unrest, while both unfortunate, did provide the Internet Society a platform to talk about the internet, which was proven to be a big lifeline as vital as the vaccine and voices being heard. And it really allowed us to move the conversation from the sellers of .org to that of the Internet Society being a trusted and strong voice for a bigger and stronger internet. So while it felt like we were walking a tightrope and 1,000 feet in the air, the sentiment numbers indicated that we were able to really neutralize the .org conversation. And so we closed out 2020 with 78% neutral media sentiment and around 45% neutral social media sentiment. And sentiment was the measurement indicator that we were using through the sale, the proposed sale, to understand how we were doing from a brand reputation perspective. So with the proposed sale conversation neutralized, we really set our, we set our sights to rebuild our reputation with a focus on being more effective in what we say and how we say it and really to a larger audience so that they could once again see the Internet Society as a global community working towards building and promoting and defending a bigger and stronger internet, which is so much more than the guardians of .org. So to achieve our vision, we started looking inside first. So we changed our approach to communications, which naturally, in any new approach, meant changing the structure of our team. So what we had done was we created one team, obviously, the marketing communication, the content and marketing team. But what we did was create two divisions. We have one division focused on the content and another division focused on the channels of content distribution. So thus, we became the Content and Marketing Communications Team, or as you see here, CMC, is what we commonly refer to ourselves as. So while we are these divisions within one team, we work in constant collaboration. We make needed decisions together. And the divisions really focus on the two critical parts of communication coming together, like a relationship. These two teams are always together mutually inclusive. And here you see our CMC Unified Purpose. And you can then see how it cascades, the Content Team Unified Purpose cascades and the Marketing Communications Team Purpose cascades.
Thank you, Kristi. So as Kristi explains, we have a major focus on content as part of our current plan. And that's because it's really a determining factor in everything we do. Everything that carries activity carries content and it's there as an enabler for our success. And when we talk about content in this respect, we really mean all of the things that we produce under the Internet Society banner. So everything from a tweet to a flagship report such as the impact report that we do and everything in between. And through those products, we carry content that becomes the currency of our ideas. And really, it's the way that we do all the things that you see in the chart there in terms of building stronger, more strategic relationships, forging a stronger bond with our community, playing, it plays an important role in achieving positive outcomes for the internet through our project focus. And of course, we're perceived through the content that we create too. So it plays a key role in building the perception of who we are. And because of that, it's the fuel that powers our brand reputation. So understanding that and the importance of content to us, 2020, as well as posing various challenges, actually afforded us an opportunity to stop and take a closer look at how well our content was working for us. And the answer to that question was that it could be working for us much harder. Our work last year helped us to identify both the challenges and the opportunities for doing content better at the Internet Society. And that resulted in a plan for content, which we are now in the midst of implementing. And really, this implementation plan is our focus for 2021 is, can be thought of as quite a significant change effort for the organization. Because ultimately, we hope that it will make us much more effective, both through the use of our channels, which of course is the aspect that marketing communications deals with and Kristi leads, as well as the effectiveness of the content itself. That's the ultimate goal. And really, our plan this year is aimed at doing the things that you see on this slide. Aimed at ensuring that our content is in tune and aligned with our strategic objectives. We want to make sure that we're putting our audiences first, not saying just what we want to say, but also balancing that need with what they want to hear. We want to be more efficient with our internal resources, our use of time, the money that we spend on content and activities, and of course, the human resources and capital that we have too. A key one is that we are putting our content model and plan into place to increase the quality of content over quantity. For too long, we've produced a huge volume of content without really focusing sufficiently on the quality. And our whole plan is designed to ensure that we get the right content out there as opposed to as much content as we can. Then we're in consult with marketing communications, thinking very hard about the channels that we have and the interplay between content and those channels. So asking ourselves the important questions like what content should go on which channel for what purpose? And not treating those things as separate pieces of the puzzle. Then lastly, putting clear guidance in place for what our content should look like and how we go about creating it. So in short, we're really creating a completely new content system that the Internet Society has always needed, but never had. And we are in the middle of building that foundation. And the foundation is, we hope, a long-term foundation and a permanent one for a better content future for the whole organization and the community. And our opportunity is to improve our content landscape from the ground up. So by that, we mean making improvements in all of the areas that you see listed there. We're putting governance and a governance framework in place that we have not had to direct all of our content choices and processes. We're putting those processes in place to help us produce the content in the right way and to increase our efficiency, all the while making sure that it's the right content in a way that ladders up to our mission and our objectives. We're creating resources to help both our staff and others create good quality content. And we're getting a better understanding of what content goes where as part of the choices we're making for our ecosystem and the ecosystem that we need to support our new content model. These fundamentals we're putting in place now to do content well will allow us over time to strengthen and cement our reputation. And we've made quite significant progress and headway with that in the first half of the year. We now have that governance framework in place. We have a content vision and everything ladders up to that vision, which is essentially to craft content that inspire, to inspire, enable and equip our various supporters, champions and allies to collaborate and advocate with us for an internet for everyone. That's the strategic core of our content strategy. It defines how content will help us achieve our mission. And to make sure that our content is aligned with that, we have a set of standards and principles and categories with which our content must align. Those standards really hinge around the fact that we're ensuring that we are asking those key questions about content in the first place. What content should we be producing given the objectives we have? Is this the right content? Does it fulfill a clear purpose? Who is it for? And will the content start new conversations or does it feed into existing conversations? All of those kinds of questions will help us standardize the content that we're making. And it must align also with categories that we've set as part of our content strategy. We also have content principles as part of this governance framework that help us not just make sure that our content is aligned, but also the processes that allow us to generate that content. And very briefly, those principles hinge around the notion that our content needs to be mission driven. We need to be good stewards of the time and resources we have available to us. Good content hinges on collaboration. And we always need to add value through our content. It's all about impact over quantity. And above all, we need to be providing clarity through the content that we create. And that idea of clarity is something, I think, that can directly impact reputation over time. Moving on from the fundamentals, we've done quite a lot of work already this year on the processes that we are going to use to apply those fundamentals. So this really comes in the form of a uniform process for content production. And we've mapped it out at high level. And it's this five-step content production process that you see here that really has an emphasis on planning upfront. So answering all those key strategic questions and at the very beginning, before we generate any content, having a clear idea of why we need to generate it, how it will help, who it's for, and also the life cycle of that content. So making decisions at the outset about how long that content should be live, whether it needs to be archived at some certain point, whether it needs to be maintained, etc. So we're thinking about its entire life cycle from the beginning. We're in a good place now with our development of all the processes. And we've got the high-level framework in place. We're building out some of the detail in each of the phases. And we're going to be moving forward to testing that workflow as a critical component of making sure that it's the right one for us. Beyond that, we've also reached some quite major milestones in terms of the resources that we've created to help people generate good content. The first of those was what we have called the Content Toolkit, which we published in mid-April, that really provides the guidance to manage content from idea to product. It's a mechanism to ground ourselves in our content strategy, but also a manual for doing content well. And it contains the fundamentals. It contains detail of our workflow. And it's the one-stop shop to help people understand how to generate content and the processes that they should be following. Beyond that, we've also developed a style guide, which we published publicly in June because it's not just for our staff audience. Other people who will be helping us generate content need to reference it too. And this is really the place where our content conventions are set out. If there is any argument about how things should be presented, what spelling we use, what title, what case we use, how we go about grammar, word usage, voice and tone, accessibility, etc. Those multitude of issues, all of them are answered by the style guide. So it's a really key resource that provides consistency across all the content that we will produce as the Internet Society. And then just in terms of next steps, whilst we've hit a couple of milestones, there's still quite a lot of work to do in the remainder of this year. We need to, as I say, make sure that our workflow is appropriate for us, that is robust enough and to get it to a point through testing in Q3 and Q4 that we can activate it more broadly across the organization. The goal right now is for our workflow to be sufficiently developed so that we can apply it in Q4 to plan our content for Q1. So really, it's all about making sure that we're getting our content system to a place that it can be activated and used as we embark on our 2022 work. There are other considerations in here as well about making sure that we have a good sense of our channel strategy and our content model in order to make that work. Plus, the delivery of a staff development and training program to ensure that people know how to use the principles, the standards, the resources, everything that we're developing this year. Because it's one thing to create those assets, but it's quite another to ensure that people understand them, understand their importance and know how to use them. So still quite a bit to do, but we're on a good trajectory. Kristi, back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, James. So while the content team is focused on what the Internet Society as an organization is saying, the marketing communications or MarCom team is focused on connecting what we are saying to the right audience and through the right mix of communication channels. Using our channels to broadcast messages and hope that the rightful receiver catches the message is just not an option in today's digital world. As a stat here on this slide indicates, the average person spends almost half of their day consuming content. So audiences are just not going to pick through the noise to get what they want. There is an expectation of audiences today that the content that they want will be put into their hands. So knowing who the audience is and the best way to reach them really increases Internet Society's effectiveness and achieving our mission. So as part of this, we are working on optimizing a core set of communication channels and helping teams target audiences so that the right people get the right message through the right channels in a way that it's very consistent with our brand and our tone of voice. So this slide here is an overview of our channel optimization strategy this year. The core channels of distribution, when we talk about it from a Marcom sense, is events, media relations, social media. And within social media at the global, at the global level, we have four core social media channels. And then, of course, our website. So the event channel optimization strategy this year is really centered on two things. One is evolving the our in our events so that they're a little bit more engaging. And second is to use this channel in a more effective way. So last year, we conducted an audit. We pulled about twenty months' worth of event data to better understand the use of this channel. And what the audit that we did revealed was that there was no common understanding within staff about what constitutes an Internet Society event. And then the other interesting finding, while there are many, the other one of note is that there was, we were involved in many events into the triple digits. However, less than twenty five percent of those, we could apply any amount of ROI even loosely. So what we did in in the first half of this year was we outlined what constitutes an Internet Society event and established criteria for those events. And then as part, we created best practice guidelines so that staff who need to host an event or attend or do an event can do so in accordance with baseline Internet Society standards. So moving over to media relations, you know, besides keeping the media machine running across the globe on a daily basis, the media relations team is really focused on building awareness amongst newsrooms so that, you know, we can talk about trending news topics. And obviously, we're doing this also through Internet Society Thought Leadership. So as part, the team is also training a larger, what I call depth of bench, across Internet staff to be able to talk about topics, news media topics, and to news media on Internet policy and Internet infrastructure. So this happens at the global level and also at the regional level so that when media calls, we can answer that call with our expertise. Moving over to social media, you know, we're really focused on increasing engagement of our messages and also doing some more core message amplification. So interestingly enough, there are over forty five, over forty five social media accounts that are linked to Internet Society Global. So what the team has been doing is really looking at how we can build collaboration workflows amongst all the various channels and do so in a way that we can have some succinct messaging across the channels. Also encourage a more approachable tone of voice and test and share insights about new social media platforms and also new features. It seems like social, depending on the channel, they're coming out with new features almost on a daily basis. And then we're also doing things like providing our chapters, our extended social accounts, if you will, with social toolkits on critical posts. And all of this, again, is in an effort to increase engagement and increase message amplification. So then moving over to the website, what I consider, what I would consider to be our storefront, we've really taken a focus on developing a roadmap to highlight front end updates and SEO improvements, all in an effort to evolve the user experience. So using some data that we collected through Google Analytics, we found that more than half of the visitors who came to our homepage left. This and other data points coupled with website best practice approach gave us our roadmap for the year. So you might have seen that recently refreshed our homepage and our navigation menus. This is part of the roadmap. And you'll see more of these critical refreshes happening throughout the back half of this year. So audience targeting, it's a bit of an art and science, and each case is different depending on the audience you're trying to reach. So here, we're presenting a case study, if you will, and it's on the economics of encryption, a report that was released by the encryption team earlier this year because it's a really a great, a great case study to show the effectiveness of audience targeting. So this paper was written for policymakers, business decision makers, journalists and encryption supporters. So identifying the right channel to target this audience and identifying the audience beyond those high level categories was critical to ensuring that all the efforts the team spent researching, writing and finalized got this paper in the right hands. And as you can see here in the results section, that the targeting, and targeting is always paid effort, really outpaced organic by impressions, engagements and clicks, all resulting in a seven minute average time on page, which is really a significant amount of time on page on any page. So two zero twenty one, how's it going? Let's take a look at how we're pulling this all together, all of our efforts in the content side and the Marcom side from a qualitative and quantitative perspective. So first, it's worth noting that we worked with the planning and reporting team to establish metrics for measuring our brand reputation on a continual basis. So we started by identifying the strategic pillars of the Internet Society brand. And when we say strategic pillars, we mean the characteristics of our brand and how we want to be perceived in the world. So in the past, we would start with all the metrics we could measure in marketing and narrow down to a to a select few based on perceived importance. This approach worked, but the challenge was we were never able to benchmark year over year. So with a pillar based approach, we were able to apply one to two data metrics representative of each pillar, taking into account the need to establish a set of metrics that we can measure year over year. So as you see here on this slide, we have our three pillars, trusted, credible and relevant. And for trusted, we're going to measure media mentions. For credible, we have two measurements, which is inbound media inquiries and also domain authority ranking. And then for relevancy, we're going to look at average social media post engagements. So we'll take a look on the next couple of slides how we're doing. So from a trusted perspective, the number of media mentions, as you can see here, we earned this in the first half of this year, a little over six hundred media mentions, which is a very sharp decline from last year. And this is primarily due to the proposed sale of P I R and ICANN's decision to block the proposed sale. Now, of those four hundred and two media mentions, almost forty percent were headlines and features on topics that strategically align with our organizational priorities. So while the mentions last year were higher, the quality and topics of those were far less relevant to us than what we're seeing this year. And of course, we always like to call out top tier media mentions as these are pretty coveted. So as you can see here, we did get a headline feature in The Times India. You also see that we got a very nice feature on community networks in indigenous communities on Mashable. Then there's also a feature here on MSN on encryption and keeping people safe online. From a credible perspective, again, you're going to see the effect of the proposed sale of P I R on media metrics be a recurring theme that will continue this year and into next year until we we remove this variable from our benchmark. So really, again, the proposed sale of P I R really explains the decrease from forty four mentions last year or from forty four inbound inquiries last year to fifteen this year. Also, another factor in the sharp decline is the trending news cycle. So last year at this time, if you remember, there was lockdowns, there was a heavy reliance on the Internet to keep society employed, educated, healthy, entertained, informed and most of all, connected. So moving on to domain ranking authority, some of you may know this, but to explain just a little bit, domain ranking authority shows the strength of the website's backlink profile compared to others on a hundred point scale. It's really important because it represents the website, how a website is doing in terms of search engines and how the search engine is seeing you. And then the domain ranking authority anywhere between forty and fifty is considered average. Not bad. Anything between fifty and sixty is considered good. Anything over consist, over sixty is considered excellent. So as you can see here, last year to this year, at this time, we are remain steady in our high ranking. And this is really important to us because search is the number one driver of inbound views to our website. Now you can see the chart on the far left shows a number of backlinks that we currently have on our website and how high those back, those back link, back links, excuse me, rank on on our website. So from a relevant perspective, again, we're looking at average social media posting engagements across our four core global channels. And we really have a focus this year on testing new approaches. And as you can see, the testing new approaches really got us to the twenty one increase in our average post engagement over this time last year. So what we did differently, so last year, we were really focused on posts that explain Internet terminology. And this year, we tested things like emojis, as you can see by the image on the left. And this one was actually our most engaged post as least as far back as we can go on both Twitter and Instagram. And then the other thing, you know, another thing to call out that we're testing is the new features. And here you see an image from LinkedIn where LinkedIn is offering this feature where you can directly embed PDFs into a post. So the user benefit is that they don't, a user doesn't have to go off of the LinkedIn platform onto a website. And what we're finding here is when we add PDFs or any sort of content directly into the posts, keeping them on the LinkedIn platform, it is our most engaged posts on LinkedIn consistently through this half of the, this first half of the year. And with that, I'll turn the mic over to James.
Thank you, Christie. So I just want to create the link again back to content because of course, content has a really important role to play in in creating brand perception and in contributing to our brand pillars of trusted, credible and relevant. So our content needs to work well for us to achieve that brand reputation. And we want to understand if it's if it's doing that. So there are a number of things from a content perspective that we have begun to measure and look at that tell us whether our content is being effective in creating the outcomes we want for our brand. The first of those is the level of community participation. And this is linked to the measures that exist in the community engagement team because there is a target there to achieve in terms of the number of individual members participating in our projects and initiative. And clearly, content is a key driver for that. And we also want to get a better sense of our audience satisfaction specifically around the content and what people feel about the content. And we've begun to collect some data on this. We are measuring, for example, the positive response rate in our individual member newsletters. And in Q two, we've had a number of people writing in proactively to us, which is essentially what that positive response rate means, whereas really, we had, we had nothing like that before. So any measure there is is a bonus to us and it's showing us that people are appreciative of the content that they're now getting and they're actually going out of their way to say so. And then lastly, the degree on the amount of strategic content that we carry through our channels, most notably our website. And one of the things that the content strategy and audit work that we did last year flagged was that there was a significant portion, up to eighty percent of our content across the website, and that's thousands of pages, that wasn't always strategically connected to our work. So we want to reverse that. We want to make sure that the vast majority of our content on our website is strategic. And that will happen through a combination of creating strategic content as well as archiving and maintaining that content that is no longer strategic to what we're doing. And then we'll finish just with a couple of examples of of some of this work in action and how Marcom and content are coming together to to bring about these changes. You've heard Christie mention the website refreshes, changes to the navigation on the website, but also changes to the content. And this is making a difference. It's been felt quite far and wide at the moment in that we've really changed our our language. We've changed our approach to a lot of the information we have in some key places on the website. And we've made it much more audience friendly. In addition, we're very conscious that we need to create content that tells the bigger story and not just the story of our projects, but how those individual pieces of work ladder up to the the Internet that we're trying to create in terms of making it bigger and making it stronger. And then lastly, there's an example here about beginning to see a return on investment from the content, those content changes that we're making. One of those is the individual member newsletter, as I say, that we're beginning to track. We're tracking the response rates from that. But also, ultimately, it's about what people then do with that content. And and that return on investment is really in the translation of content to action because ultimately, it's the action that we want. And there's a nice anecdotal reference here about someone who who appreciates receiving that content and because of that content is now participating in a meeting to help plan Global Encryption Day. The second example is, again, content related in that this person is is saying that they're proud to be an Internet Society member and they're highlighting to their own network the the things that we have done in two zero twenty to create positive outcomes for the Internet. And I would encourage everyone to have a look at that impact report from two zero ten twenty because it's a really great example of the kind of content that we believe can drive our reputation and that we need to do more of. So content and communications and marketing communications are committed to continuing to work hand in hand to increase our reputation in in these ways and use the power of content and the effective, efficient use of channels to do that. Christie and I would like to thank you very much for listening and we look forward to talking to you at the forthcoming board meeting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I don't see any, anyone responding saying that they are interested in serving as chair. So we'll have to break now. Oh, wait, before we do that, I wonder whether Ted would like to say something about about his candidacy as the chair.
Thanks to each of you for your service on the board. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And I simply wanted to let you know that I believe strongly in the mission of the society and that as chair, if you decide to elect me, I will do my best to make sure that the board is an effective actor in helping the society move forward on that mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. I see that Mohammed is joining. So when he joins, I will pause for a moment and ask whether he wishes to express a desire to run for the chair position just to cover all the bases. Mohammed, can you hear us?
Mohammed, you may be.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Sometimes. Yes, now I can hear you fine. So I was just calling the election of the chair and I wanted to make sure whether you wish to express a desire to serve as chair in the next year. We have had the expression from Ted.
No, thank you, Andrew. I'm not interested as now to serve as chair, so I'm happy with that.
Great. Thank you. All right. So now we have to run an election, which means that Great, thank you. All right, so now we have to run an election, which means that we, we pause and all, all attendees right now who are not voting members, not voting trustees or me, have to leave the meeting. So Kevin will ask everybody to step out of the meeting who is not a voting trustee. And, and when he has done that, I will open the discussion among you for anything you want to say about Ted. Ted, also, I would ask that you step out during this discussion. Yes, this works a lot better in person.
We're waiting for Sarah and Rinalia and Ilona to leave the meeting.
Kevin, I assume you can stop the broadcast to the non-panelists.
Yes, we are.
All right, welcome back, everyone. The board uses an online voting platform for the elections and Kevin has configured the electronic ballots and sent them to everyone. So the ballots have been distributed to the trustees. You should see it in Board Effect. If you do not see it in Board Effect, try refreshing your page. It's at the very bottom of the homepage. And Kevin will display the results when the, when the election is completed, when all ballots have been received.
Sorry, Kevin.
If, if you scroll down to the bottom of your homepage, you should see polls and surveys. And then vote for board chair. I tried refreshing your, your screen too. Polls and surveys. Is anyone else having difficulty finding the?
I am having difficulty.
Okay.
I'm willing to make my vote public, deliver it verbally.
It should appear at the bottom of your, your screen under polls and surveys.
George, if you click on the left-hand side, it says home.
Yeah.
Click the home, refresh, and then, and then refresh the screen. And then when you scroll all the way to the bottom, it has a section called polls.
I've refreshed.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you.
That should be the same cycle you go through for the other votes this week.
Thank you very much.
Hi, did it, Kevin? Do you see my vote?
I don't see individual polls. I just see that we have all but one, one ballot received, all but one.
Okay.
Mymuna, did you find it? Okay, I have all twelve. Would you like me to display the results?
Yes, please.
Okay. With twelve votes, twelve out of twelve for Ted Hardy as chair.
So, thank you very much, Ted, for your willingness to serve and congratulations. The vote is unanimous. So at this point, I will hand the role presiding on this meeting over to, over to Ted. But before I do that, I wanted to offer you the feedback from, from the board in their discussion. The, the, the board is thankful and appreciates your willingness to serve and believes you will do an excellent job. But wanted to remind you that all of the rest of the trustees are here to call upon should you need their assistance. So please don't hesitate to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both for the confidence in taking up this new role and for the willingness to serve. Our, our next agenda item is in fact, our next election. It is the election of the other officers. There are two agenda items underneath that. One is the confirmation of the decision on the board secretary role, and the second is the election of the treasurer. Since the confirmation doesn't require any change to the, to the group here, why don't we do that first? As folks will recall, we discussed in working board meetings the fact that since Ilona has taken up the role of corporate secretary, that having her also take the role of board secretary, we're not appointing a separate board secretary, would make sure that the, the full set of trustees were always able to focus on the work of the board rather than stopping and taking notes and, and doing that sort of thing instead. As a result, we proposed not to fill the role of board secretary at this time. Is there anybody who wishes to revisit that decision? Okay. Seeing no issues with that, we'll, we'll call that decision confirmed and now move to the election of the treasurer. As Andrew pointed out, there was a previous message from John Levine asking for expressions of interest. And during that, Laura expressed interest in the role of treasurer and there were none, no other expressions of interest at that time. Is there anybody else who wishes to express interest in the role of treasurer at this time? Seeing none, we'll now go through the same process that you just went through. Laura will ask you to step aside and Kevin, if anybody else has joined us as an observer in this short period, we'll ask them to step as well.
Okay, I would last, ask any attendees to leave the meeting room, leave the webinar. Also, those of you on staff that are in the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to remind you, it's the Board Effect dance. It is click on home in the top left and refresh your browser and scroll all the way to the bottom. And there should be a vote for treasurer poll there. Perhaps board treasurer to line, line with the new violence.
Kevin, whenever the, the set of votes is complete, feel free to just go ahead and display the results for us.
Okay, here are the results. We have twelve out of twelve votes for Laura Thompson as treasurer.
Thank you very much, Laura, for agreeing to serve in the role and congratulations. During the discussion, there was every confidence expressed in your ability to do the job and a great deal of appreciation for your willingness to take it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted, and thank you, everyone. The next, thank you, having done it. Thank you to Richard for having done it last couple of years because I've had some insight into how much work lies ahead. Thank you.
I think the last year, maybe not the last year, but the year before that was definitely a challenging one indeed. So the next item on the agenda is appointing a liaison to the ITF nominations committee. This one is slightly different in that it is a standard resolution rather than a board effect poll. So first, the expression of interest prior to that was, prior to this meeting was from Brian Haberman. Brian, are you so willing to serve?
I am.
Is there anybody else who wants to throw their hat in the ring at this moment? Okay, the resolution reads, resolve that the ISAC board appoints Brian Haberman as ISAC board liaison to the ITF nominations committee for the 2021-2022 term. May I ask for someone to move the motion and a second? I saw Robert move and Laura second. I suggest we do this by acclamation. Thank you very much, Brian, for your willingness to serve. The next item on the agenda is the annual appointment of committee chairs and members. The list that you see on the agenda was drawn from the discussions that occurred after the, the first expressions of interest. There were some changes to the original spreadsheet in order to accommodate some of the restrictions on different aspects of which committees can have overlapping membership. We can do this in two ways. We can either do this committee by committee or we can approve the whole. As Gonzalo has pointed out a number of times, it is somewhat faster to approve the whole, but we can definitely approve it committee by committee if there are specific changes people would like or if discussion needs to occur on some committees. So the first question is, would the board like to approve this by, by approving the whole slate? Is that, that's the current proposal. Is there any objection to approving it in that way?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, hearing no objection, we'll take that way forward. So in essence, the motion I would like to hear is that we move for the appointment of the committee chairs and members as listed in the agenda. Can I ask somebody to move that? I, I saw George first and then Brian. So George moves and Brian second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Great, so we have this by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. As a reminder to those who are watching the, the recording of this or who are observers, there are a couple of committees in here, for example, the elections committee and the nominations committee, for whom additional members will be appointed later in the year. But the committee chairs at this point have been appointed and they will run the process from, from this point on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous board minute meeting. The proposed resolution there is resolved at the minutes of the one hundred and fifty-eighth meeting of the ISAC Board of Trustees held by video conference on eighth of July, 2021 are approved. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes? Hearing none, may I ask for somebody to move the motion? I saw Brian first and then Richard. In chat, Richard suggests that we use the raising of hands as being slightly more effective than aye or nay. As a result for this one, I would like everybody who is in favor to please raise their hand.
Ted, you'll want a verbal confirmation from Mohammed.
Yes, I, I can tell I can't, can't see Mohammed on my screen. Mohammed, are you in favor? Okay, let's move on to the second question. Is there anybody who is opposed? Please raise your hand. Is there anybody who chooses to abstain? Seeing no hands there. Mohammed, do you wish to record a position on this?
Sorry, Ted, I, sorry, Chair, I lost your voice, could you please?
This is the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting and the positions available to, to approve the minutes of the previous meeting and you can vote yes to approve, no to.
I, I vote, I vote yes.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is to welcome a new chapter. That resolution is resolved that the ISAC Board of Trustees warmly welcomes the Internet Society Zambia chapter and we extend our congratulations to President Levy Cienseki and all the officers of the new chapter. I propose we do this by acclamation. In that same vein, we have been notified of a, a couple of chapters, the Barbados chapter and the US Colorado chapter, which have entered rejuvenation status. There are, at the moment, several other chapters, including Nepal, South Africa, Gautan and Thailand in that status. And certainly, I'm sure the board joins me in wishing the two chapters entering and the, those chapters already in rejuvenation status a success with that effort. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to accept a summary of the agreed board action items from the 2021 Board of Trustees. So as folks will recall, especially those who were on the previous board, the board will create a summary of action items that they wish the new board to consider. This is the moment in the agenda when we acknowledge receipt of that. That doesn't bind this board to, to act within it, but it is a formal notification that we have received that advice from the previous board for those of you, this is the act they're in. And we're, we'll basically go forward with this. The, the summary of the agreed board action items were continue developing a high-level strategy for revenue diversification for the future of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation and continue to support the project approved as part of the Internet Society's 2021 action plan. The proposed resolution is accept the summary of agreed board action items from the 2021 Board of Trustees. Resolve the ISAC Board of Trustees accepts the summary of agreed board action items as conveyed by the 2020 to 2021 Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Sorry, a question. I've been on several boards in the past and this has never been discussed. I've never seen a motion like this. It's always been assumed that the new board will learn from what the old board has done and then proceed with the program. Is this a legal requirement on us? Is it just something we have done over the years? I'm not sure you can answer this immediately, but it is curious that we're doing it. Thank you.
I can answer because I was also curious and dug into the history a little bit and it turns out that this is not a legal requirement per se. It's something that started during the previous CEO's term as there were a couple of occasions when there was a very large turnover of trustees. As you know, given the way our system works, we're always expecting a fair number of trustees to be up for reelection each time. And in cases where there's also been a loss of a trustee during the course of a year, that number can get quite high if there's a a large turnover in who is elected or appointed. And as a result of that, the CEO suggested, and the board at that time agreed, that it was a good practice to formally hand over this advice so that even if there were a very large turnover in trustees, it was then obvious to the new trustees what the consensus of the previous board had been. And it has been carried forward since Kathy's time until now. It does seem to me a good practice, given the way the board appointments and elections work here, to make sure that there is sort of a formal send and receive here. And that's the history of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, I will ask for a motion to accept this summary. I saw my Muna and Richard. So once again, we'll do this by raising hands. All those in favor, please raise your hands now. Thank you very much. Mohammed, we have seen your hand. Any opposed? Please raise your hand now. Any abstain? Thank you very much. The motion carries unanimously. So the next item on our agenda is the recognition of outgoing trustees. To express appreciation to the outgoing trustees for service to the board, there is a formal resolution which states resolve that the board thanks Walid Al-Sakaf, Gonzalo Camarillo, John Levine and Heather West for their dedication and outstanding service to the Internet Society's member of the Board of Trustees and extends special appreciation to Gonzalo for his leadership over the past five years as board chair and to John for his commitment as board secretary over the same period. I would like to add, personally, I have found working with each of those former trustees an extraordinarily enriching experience and the statement of this that we thank them for their dedication is not empty in any way, shape or form. Each of them has put in an enormous amount of time and effort to their service of the board, especially John as secretary and Gonzalo as chair. And I extend my own personal and heartfelt thank you in addition to this resolution. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this point?
Me, Luis.
Luis, please.
Yes, I would like to thank Gonzalo for his guidance on the incoming board members. It has been really helpful, the way to understand, his way to explain and for us to understand how the board works and wish the best for John and Gonzalo in the future and thanks for their service in the board.
I would agree with that and, you know, I think some of the things that Walid put in his note, I think we all feel, I mean, everybody's contributed enormously. And even when there were differences of opinion, everybody was, and it still is, including the current board members, enormously of goodwill and working together and working through what had been some difficult issues, but we all got there. And I just want to, again, personally thank Gonzalo and John for all of your efforts and Gonzalo and his, you know, incredible leadership and inclusion. And, you know, Ted, you know, you're the same way. So looking forward to it, but thanking everybody.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this point? Okay, I think we should approve this by acclamation. So thanks to everybody. That brings us to the end of the current section of the agenda and we will have a short break until 15:05 UTC. That is in approximately 15 minutes when we will resume in closed executive session to receive the PIR report. So unless there is any other business for this section of the agenda, we will take that short break. Any other business?
Just, I just want to confirm, we are resuming in closed session or immediately in closed session, is that correct?
That is correct. We will resume immediately in closed session in order to receive the PIR report.
Very good. At 15:05.
Yes, at five minutes after the hour.
I'm assuming that it's the guests, they're not invited.
For the closed session, no, that will be a closed session because the report reports the PIR.
See you later.
Thank you, John. Okay, see everybody in a few minutes. Thanks, everybody, for joining us for this session of the annual general meeting of the ISAC Board of Trustees. This is meeting number 159. The purpose of this section is to hear a series of reports from different community groups and the first of those is from Miria Kovan. Before we start, is there anybody who needs to declare a conflict of interest in relation to any of these reports? Hearing none. Miria.
Yeah, there should be some slides somewhere. Yeah, there we go. So this is the report from the Internet Architecture Board. If you just can go to the next slide, maybe full screen would be helpful. There we are. Because there are some new people here, I quickly have the slide just to explain what the Internet Architecture Board is. So there are three leadership groups in the ITF. One is the Internet Architecture Board, the other one is the ISG and the LSC Board. The ISG is more responsible for, let's say, operations of the working groups and the and the RSCs and the meetings. And the LSC is more on the administrative and financial side and the IAB has another set of tasks which is listed on the slide. And so we are responsible for a bunch of process-related things like electing and appointing people to certain positions. Also having the whole external resource process is something that we manage. We are the contact point for Ayana, we are the contact point for ISOC as well. And there's also this A in the IAB, the architecture part, where we are a body that has like architecture oversight or what the ITF is doing. And that means we try to figure out if there are any kind of gaps missing, if there are any kind of high-level recommendation that might be useful to the community and we do this by organizing workshops, organizing ourselves into programs, also writing a couple of RSCs from time to time. Okay, on the next slide, you see the current IAB members. So the IAB has 12 community-selected members. And on top of that, we have also the IETF Chair as a member of the IAB. We have the IRTF Chair in the IAB and we have the RSC, serious editor, or actually at the moment it's the RSC Project Manager. It's a temporary position here. So that's us. Next slide. I think you already received the report that we produce with all the details of what we do that we produce for every ITF meeting, but he has also the link again. I just want to highlight two things. We, between the last meeting and this meeting, we created a new position which is called the Liaison Coordinator Position and which is currently served by Tommy Polly and Wes Hardaker. And this is mainly for our internal organization, how we want to handle liaison management in the ITF. However, if you ever have any questions about this also liaison management, what I actually want to point you to is this email address. We have their new email address, which is liaisons-coordination@ib.org. So if you have any questions, feel free to send something there. And the other point I want to highlight quickly is that we recently published RC 9075, which is a report of the workshop that we had last November on network impacts based on the COVID-19 situation. I reported a little bit on this workshop already the last time I was here, I guess. So that's why I wanted to just provide you this link if you want to read the full report there. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Another thing I would like to quickly mention to you is also related to this architecture oversight part. So what we did recently is also trying to focus more on the technical and architectural work. And one of the things that we've been doing is that we try to reserve one of our calls or usually weekly calls that we have once per month, one of these calls for technical discussions only. And you can see that we did this for a couple of weeks already and you can see some of the topics we've been discussing. And we, our last discussion was on content moderation and we had two people from ISOC coming in, giving us some background information about legal aspects and these kind of things. So that was very good and very interesting for us and I hope we can do that more often because I think that's very valuable. So in general, if you are interested in any of these calls, the IAB calls are actually open for observers. So you can find the agenda on the IAB webpage and also find the minutes of these calls in case this is something interesting for you. Yeah, on the next slide, I also want to highlight to you our upcoming next workshop that we are organizing. So we are organizing a workshop on measuring network quality of for end users. And the workshop will be in September. The submission deadline is in two days on Monday. So if you're interested in this, you can actually submit a position paper to us. That just has to be a very short paper explaining your interest in this topic and we would be able to invite you to the workshop, but we can also figure out if you're really interested to invite you without a paper that's more convenient for you. So anyway, this is coming up just for your information. And then I have one last slide. I'm not sure if this is interesting for any of you, but we are in the middle of a quite big redesigning effort regarding the RSC Editor model. Was there a question? I'm not sure. Let me run through the slide and then we can have questions anyway. So the ITF in the middle of redesigning the RSC Editor model. So that is organized by an IAB program, but it's really a community-driven process. And the reason why I'm highlighting this here right now is because we made quite good progress recently. So there's now a document describing the basis of this new model. And so if you're interested in this, then you, this is the right point of time to look at this draft and read what's going on there. So the major change is from the previous model where there was mainly the RSC Editor and then also the RSC Editor who is like responsible also for strategy and oversight. And then on the other side, there was the RRC Production Center, which does all the operational stuff. We now basically have two additional entities. One is the RCC Series Working Group. So this is more organized like a working group to get more input to the, from the community and more transparency. And that group is now responsible for strategic questions. That group is then supposed to also publish RSCs about the operation of the RCC Series. And these documents are then approved by the RCC Series Approval Board, which is also a new entity we are creating. And this board consists of the Stream Managers and the RSC Editor. So basically what we have here is that the role of the RSC Editor is changing from, you know, being the one and only deciding about strategy more to an advisory role to the working group and to the board and to the production center. And that's already my report. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks very much for the report, Miria. Are there any questions?
It's me, Luis.
Luis, go ahead.
Thank you, Myra, for the, for your presentation. I just read somewhere in the report that there was an open meeting last 29th of July. So I know it has been such a short time between now and the 29th of July, but you have any insights about what are the results of that open meeting?
This is a thing that we do for roughly a year right now that we have at every ITF meeting. We also have this IAB open meeting. So that gives us more time with the community to discuss about technical aspects and we do a little bit of reporting to the community about our programs, our workshops and also the documents we are working on, the technical documents, not the administrative boring stuff. And so at this time, we reported back mainly on the EDM program. That's also something that I did report to you while ago, but you can also find it on the IAB page. And also some technical drafts we're working on right now. I don't think I have anything like, there's no like big outcome out of that. It's more like explaining these things to the community and getting input from the community, what we do there.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Miria?
Miria, I just wanted to ask, I saw on one of the other slides, something I've seen on slides for years about the IAB acting in some kind of advisory capacity to the Internet Society. Like, how do you see that relationship these days? It's been a while since I was on IAB. Can you just kind of fill us in on that?
Yeah, actually, this is also something that we did discuss recently. Andrew came to us and did us a little bit of an update about the plans and strategy from ISOC. So we're a little bit more up to date there. I really think we should try to, you know, make the best out of that in the sense that we try to keep both sides up to date about what we're doing and then utilizing the capabilities we have there. And one of the things we did recently is, for example, invited some people from ISOC about this content motivation that was very valuable for us. And I also discussed with Karen that we should like figure out those things more often on both sides and just like have a good communication and utilize the expertise we have on both sides. So I hope that we can work, not work closely together, but having a better overview about what the other organization is doing so we can can have a discussion when it's needed or when it's useful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions?
Andrew?
Yeah, this is really for the benefit of the trustees. But you mentioned Karen in passing there and all the trustees may not know who you're referring to. So Karen O'Donoghue is part of our staff and she is the liaison from the staff to the IAB. Formally, remember that the IAB is actually an advisory committee to the board, to all of you. So the formal relationship is very much like the, the Chapter 8 Advisory Council and the OMAC. But, but we have a staff function that provides that link. And, you know, we get regular feedback from her. I don't know if it would be useful to the board to to have a regular check-in with her, but if that's, if that's something you would like, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, Andrew. Let's take that to maybe one of our working board sessions as a question. Any other comments from Miria? Okay, thank you again, Miria, for the report today and for the sending it in early so that trustees could read it in advance. I see Jason has joined us as well and I believe he is next.
Yep, thank you. I will be off again and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Hi, Jason, how are you doing today?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good. We have a couple of new trustees who have joined since you were last here. And that's Brian and Brian Haberman and John Peterson, who I think you know. Luis, do you want to give a quick introduction to Jason?
Hi, Jason. My name is Luis Martinez. I was selected by chapters and I'm a professor at the Iber Americana University in Mexico City. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mohammed?
Hi, this is Mohammed Shabir. I'm from Pakistan and I work at National Defense University Islamabad. Islamabad, and I present chapters on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohamed. Jason, do you want to give a quick introduction and then your report?
Sure, of course. Yeah, nice to meet the new folks. My name is Jason Livinggood. I am chair of the IETF LLC board, so sort of the administrative and legal oversight organization for the IETF. And I previously served on the Internet Society Board, so I'm very familiar with the work that you're all doing. And I'm based on the, in the United States on the East Coast. Kevin, do you want me to do the slides? Oh, there we go. Awesome. Thank you. So what I'm going to do is, is really just give a summary of the report that we just presented at the past IETF meeting, which was another online meeting just concluded yesterday, in fact. Kevin, if you can do the next slide. Our main sponsor was Juniper, so we thank them in the plenary and appreciate their financial support. They're one of our key global supporters. Next one. And I won't go through all these. These are kind of pro forma. Next one. Next one. Next one. Next one. Next one. So our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Madrid in November of this year. And we have a meeting with the IESG, the Internet Engineering Steering Group, next week to make a decision on whether or not to proceed with an in-person meeting or a hybrid meeting, or to have an online meeting again. And while final decision hasn't been made, I think we can all, I think we all assume based on the Delta variant right now, that it's unlikely that we'll be able to meet in person in Madrid. And so if you go to the next slide, one more. So looking ahead, you know, the IETF, for those that aren't familiar with it, has met three times a year in person, all around the world, and it rotates between North America, where the Americas, Europe and Asia. And, you know, so this one was supposed to be in San Francisco, but it was held online, of course, which is what we've done since the pandemic began. The Madrid meeting looks unlikely to be possible to hold in person, but like I said, we'll decide soon. And what we typically do is we rebook those, those venues for the future, because there was, you know, a lot of work typically done to research those locations and to secure contracts and so on. And then the March 1 of, of next year will be potentially in Bangkok, and then Philadelphia next July. And I think at this point, this is sort of the biggest challenge facing the organization is determining, of course, you know, when is it possible to begin in-person meetings? And what does that first in-person meeting look like? It's very likely some sort of a hybrid meeting where you have a substantial number of people participating online, while you have some people in person. And so the, the, in particular, our volunteer teams, like our tools and NOC teams, are spending a lot of time beginning to think about what that looks like from a technology standpoint, and how to manage that so that everyone, everyone's participation is more or less an equal footing. So we'll see, you know, this is the biggest uncertainty. We're of course not alone in facing this. So we'll see, see what happens. And our fingers are crossed for, you know, good developments in the future. Next slide. We actually had some very good attendance numbers, 1,200 people for this meeting, which was above budget. It was great to see. Next slide. And we've got actually two new hires on the staff. Lee Berkeley, who is our new director of development. So the person hired to be in charge of fundraising. And Kishara, who is a software development engineer, we have a huge amount of technical debt on our different platforms. And so Kishara is one of the folks that's taking that on, along with Robert Sparks and other folks. Next slide. Next one. And these are our board members. Next slide. So we publish all of our meetings in advance. The one thing that's notable here, which I'll mention again on the next slide, but I'll just go into detail here, is typically we have a monthly board meeting. But in August, we actually have an additional meeting, which was our second IAS two webinar. And so for folks that aren't familiar with what that is, it's the, it's basically the, the administrative model or architecture, if you will, for how the IETF is run and organized and overseen. And the version that created the LLC board a few years ago was called IAS two, because it was the second iteration of that model. And when they, that organization was established in our sort of formative documents, we committed to doing a three-year retrospective, basically go back and review where we able to achieve all the objectives that were set forth when the organization was envisioned. Are there any open issues, et cetera? So that consultation is ongoing with the community. And we established a variety of ways that we can take feedback from email, to GitHub, to webinars, office hours, et cetera. So that's one of those things. Next slide. So since our last meeting in March, our last IETF meeting, these are the main things that have been taking place. We completed our second financial review and audit, got a clean bill of health, the fiscal 2020. That's great. As I mentioned, we're in the three-year retrospective right now. We updated our SWOT pest assessment, which Peter van Russtra helped facilitate. So strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, political, economic, social, technical. So basically looking at the context within which the organization fits and potential risks and how to mitigate those things. And then a very minor thing, just finishing an email policy for staff accounts now that we have some new staffers coming on board. Next slide. So in terms of budget, we are doing fairly well. The revenue difference here, the reason for that is simply down to when we recognized the revenue from ISOC, in fact. So sort of the timing when that came and, you know, when our budget was set. So, you know, that, that's not something I would really pay attention to. In terms of where we stand and where we're projecting to be towards end of year, in terms of net income, you know, it'll be pretty close to a wash. In our budget, we, we envisioned that we would have, you know, probably two in-person meetings, doesn't seem likely to be the case. So a lot of our costs and revenues end up going down, but we figured out an equilibrium, a way to sort of match those on a meeting by meeting basis, which is good. And that's partly because we have a registration fee for those online meetings. Next slide. And we've got lots of ways for people to contact us. And next one, I think is the last. Yep. So that's it for the slides. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions for him?
The three-year retrospective, you, you mentioned having a, a bunch of different ways for people to communicate back the feedback. What, what's been the feedback rate like?
Feedback rate is very, very, very low at the moment. So we are planning to send some reminders via email in the next couple of weeks, just to try to drum up a little bit more feedback. I think part of that is certainly, you know, it's vacation time for many people. At the same time, you know, we want to try to elicit a little bit more feedback. And we posed in particular, I can't remember the exact number of discussion items. It might have been like three or four or five discussion items where we really wanted specific feedback from the community. And those are the ones in particular, we'll be pushing hard again.
Cool, thanks.
So Jason, George.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, George.
Okay, thanks. Jason, just to verify, your fiscal year is January through December?
That's right, yeah.
And, and I noticed in your statement to the last slide, that you have about $20 million in reserve, right? Are they directed, is that essentially, that essentially your reserves portfolio and your investments?
Yeah, it's reserves and endowment and things like that. But yeah, we want to make sure we, we've maintained, and I think it was in the formation documents, I think it was like three years of reserves to be able to continue operation. If there was some major interruption, we don't foresee anything in the, you know, in the near to medium term.
That's prudent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So Jason, live meetings, you have a pretty good idea of how to balance the cost. And obviously, when you go pure online, it's easy to equilibrium. When we get back to hybrids, most hotels have minimums and minimum of attendances and the rest of those. Do you have some kind of like plan or slush for how to finesse that depending on unexpected attendance, either good or bad?
Yeah. So the one thing, so Jay, who is our executive director, JDLA, has been working with AMS, the secretary at OMS. And, you know, I guess the good thing is the hospitality industry is very flexible right now. So that's, that's a positive. But it, it has been apparent in some of the conversations that they're very willing to let us reduce the meeting footprint size as needed. And, you know, that will help so that we don't have, you know, way, you know, huge amounts of excess space. So there, there seems like there's a great deal of flexibility. And in particular, it seems easy to be able to take an agreement if we wanted to and move that off into the future and come up with a smaller one. But I think the big, big question will be for the next one, like maybe the first hybrid meeting, is, is it going to be, let's say, one location with, let's say, half of the people and the other half sort of distributed online? Or would there be a notion of like regional centers around the world that people might go to? I don't think anybody has a really great answer to that. The community is doing a lot of thinking about that. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. I think the other thing that we've got to figure out is, what does the fee structure potentially look like? Because when we have had in-person meetings, entirely in-person, it was free for the remote participants. But when we've gone entirely online, there has been a fee. And so we're, we're going to begin some sort of a fee consultation with the community to figure out, you know, when you have a mix and you still have some costs to defray, and it's not all met by the in-person attendance, you know, what does that look like? And when we last did that sort of consultation for online meetings, it was like right before it happened because of how fast COVID came out. So we hoping to have a lot more time and involve more community comment, but we'll see. There's a lot of open questions.
Gotcha. Yeah, just a comment on that is that, yeah, most people are still figuring out corporate travel budgets and kind of conference budgets in advance too. So yeah, the sooner that we can make some kind of stab at what we're going to do, I suspect that's probably good to share.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, you know, it's the other sort of complicating factor here, because as an example, we were speaking with some of the folks from our sponsor for the Madrid meeting. And they said, even if you held the meeting here, like, we're not allowed to travel, and we don't have travel budget. So, you know, it, it will be certainly complicated.
A follow-up to, to that, I, I know that in the first couple of times, there were, there were fee waivers offered for people who couldn't afford the remote. Those were sponsored. Are those, do you continue to find sponsors for that?
Yeah, it's continued to work as it has in the past, and we get a good number. And it doesn't seem like the worries of being overrun with fee waiver requests has, has occurred. So people are being really reasonable about it. So we've been pleased. It's, it's worked really well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Jason? Luis?
Yes. Have you considered the possibility that you go back, or we go back to online or face-to-face sessions? And then because of the advancement of the pandemic around the world, the, the, the next place cannot be held in person? Would it change a lot the, the plans to go back and forth from online to presential?
That's a good, good question. I don't think so. I think we are at this point so used to all the uncertainty here, and able to sort of, you know, quickly pivot to make changes in the, in the meeting plans that I think will be okay. And we know how to do online, and we know how to do in person, and we'll learn soon how to do a hybrid meeting. So I think once those three things are, you know, might be a rotation, you know, depending upon what part of the world and where the, the virus is. So we'll see. But I think, I think we'll be okay with that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason, for, for the report and for the conversation after. We look forward to continuing to work in with you. Thanks again.
Thanks very much. Take care.
Glenn, welcome. You, you are up next. Just to give a quick introduction, I, I think you know John Peterson and Brian Haberman from, from the IETF. But Mohamed, would you like to introduce yourself to Glenn?
Yes, Mohamed Shabir Alwan from Pakistan.
Hello, Mohamed.
Hi, my name is Luis Martinez. I'm a professor at Iber Americana University in Mexico City. Nice to meet you.
Hello, Luis.
And Glenn, if you could go ahead with your, your introduction and report?
Sure. So I'm Glenn Dean. I work for Comcast, NBC Universal, in my day job. In my off time, I'm the chair of the IETF Trust. And if I can get my slides put up, Kevin, you got those slides? So, you know, it's interesting, as Ted says, I recognize a few of the faces. I also recognize a few of the faces have either been IETF trustees, or are current IETF trustees, such as John. So some of this will be material, some of you have heard before, and some of this is material, some of you helped put together at some point in your, in your relationship with the IETF Trust. But next slide, please. So currently, there are five trustees. When the IETF spun off and created the IETF LLC that Jason just talked about, one of the things we had to change was that in the past, the old committee, the, the IOC, which oversaw the administrative portions of the IETF, one of the things that that wall got you, if you were on the IOC, was that you became eligible to become an IETF trustee. And when we spun off the LLC and created that whole thing and blew up the IOC and ended it, we had to create a new process for selecting trustees. And we had to figure out what does a trustee need to be. So far, that involved changing, you know, the, the definition of membership authors or ability for IETF trustees, so that they no longer had to be IOC members, since the IOC no longer existed. But also part of it involved, well, you know, who selects trustees and where they come from. So how it's done today is we get three selected by the IETF NOMCOM. We have one selected by the IETF IESG, and we have one selected by yourselves. And so that brings us together with five people. I'm the chair, Kathleen Moriarty is the treasurer, Joe Helper and John Levine and Stefan are, round out the other five trustees altogether. And together, what our mission is, is to manage IP for the IETF and the broader community on the internet. Next slide, please. So as I said, we manage IP. What does that mean? Well, it really means that if there's copyrights that needed to be managed and protected, that's a thing we will do. And we do that for the IETF. If there are copyrights for other materials or copyright related discussions that need to take place, we also do that. So for instance, the protocol parameter registers that are registries that are up on IANA are something that the IETF Trust provides sort of IP oversight over for the materials that come into that, primarily from the IETF, but they can come into it from other places. But we, we look at that and ask, you know, how is that being managed? Is it being managed with the intent of the community? And part of the intent of the community for IP around here is not to lock it up and make it inaccessible, but in fact, to make it accessible, make it easy for the broad internet to make use of, but also at the same time protect. Because if we just let some of these things said, we don't care, they're free, do whatever you want, we could get in situations where somebody might take something that we've created as a community, extend it, and then lock it away from us as a community to prevent us from even using it. So we, we defend the IP while keeping the, the sort of general principle, let's make this easy to use and accessible. And so we navigate the legal structures of IP, and that's copyrights, trademarks, but not patents, around the world, and we protect it on behalf of the community. We also do this, as I say, for IANA, we also do it for ICAM. So if the ICAM IT department, for instance, wants to make changes to the domains for ICAM, one of the things that the trust does, we actually provide a checkpoint where they have to go and say, we want to make the proper change. The trustees themselves actually are in the role of approving those changes. And so we provide a sort of a checkpoint to make sure that, you know, unwanted changes are getting made. Does that make sense? We also do some software stuff, IETF tools, the IETF Yang catalog. And recently, we've entered into an agreement with the IETF LLC. When they got spun up and created, they started creating IP as a legal entity. And the question came up, well, who owns and manages that IP? Well, the, the LLC does a lot of things, you know, they manage big budgets, they work on the medians, they, they work on fundraising for the IETF. We said, well, the trust does that for everybody else. Why don't we do that for the IETF We said, well, the trust does that for everybody else. Why don't we do that for the ITF LLC? And so we just recently entered an agreement where the LLC transferred the IP that had been created, things like badges for Quick and other things, transferred over the trust for our management. And then we sublicensed it back and said, hey, this is yours, we'll protect it, but you go off and use it however you like. And you can even sub-license it to other people. And if you have problems, you need somebody to send nasty letters and, you know, somebody is doing something bad, come back to us. We're there for you to do that for you and help you protect your IP. Next slide, please. So this will come up in, in a couple of slides why I'm explaining our trust structure. We are currently a Virginia Commonwealth Trust. And we're independent of the ITF, we're independent of ISOC, that is for historic reasons. When we were originally spun up, there was a desire by members of the community who owned a lot of IP themselves to figure out where, where is a nice neutral place to house and protect this IP? And so they spun up the ITF Trust. If you spun it up today, you might not have called it the ITF Trust, you might simply have called it like, you know, the big internet IP protector for the internet community. I don't know, something else, because sometimes just called the ITF Trust gets a little confusing. It makes people think, we just do ITF stuff. We don't just do ITF stuff, we do more. And you can see there we have a website, trustee.itf.org. As I covered, there's five trustees. Trustees themselves are not lawyers typically, they don't have to be lawyers. If you are a lawyer, you can still be a trustee, we don't hold that against you. But the role of trustees is instead of just handing this over to a, a law firm or a legal group, the, you know, if you did that, you might end up with capture from one particular legal viewpoint. They may not represent the community. So by having five trustees that sort of guide this and listen to the community, engage with the community, and then represent the community's interests and with dialogue with the community where we want to make changes, we provide that sort of community balance, just like the, yourselves provide that balance for ISOC. And the LLC board provides that for the ITF LLC and the ITF community. We're small, we have a small budget, it's around a hundred thousand dollars. Most of that we actually spend on support, lawyers and things like registrations. We have services that will monitor domains to see if they change. But we're very small and we try to have a diversity of funding. We get a lot of our funding from the ITF. In the past, it was from ISOC. But we also get contributions in the past from Google, NBC, Tencent have contributed. And we continue to look for places where it makes sense for us to do outreach and seek small contributions. We do not want to be, build a big war chest that stars, we just want enough really to cover our operating costs and have a little bit of reserve in the bank in case something goes bump in the night. Next slide, please. So what have we been doing? Well, I mentioned the ITF LLC IPR transfer. So we took over some stuff from them and then licensed it back. We've been working on the IANA parameters registry. It turns out that while the stuff there is intended to be easily accessible without additional controls, in fact, much of it isn't subject to copyright because of the way copyright laws shake out. It's confusing and we've had questions come in from adopters and users of that stuff wanting clarification. So we did a consultation with the ITF and said, you know, we want to officially declare this stuff to be much more open. And here's how we're going to go about doing the ITF. Well, Ken said, sounds great. We continue to work with ICANN to get the right balance. We're working with ICANN and IANA, the, the legal staff over there to make sure the way we do this expresses the intent correctly and doesn't start infringing upon anybody else's stuff like ITRPs that are also in the IANA registry. So it's a little bit complicated. We're getting there. It's a slow process. Sometimes it can get extra slow when you deal with lawyers, but that's life. That's what we do. We also protect, you know, in addition copyrights, logos, trademarks, so like the ITF logo. We are a fashion consulting place. We get to approve ITF t-shirts. And the primary purpose there is that we don't want people taking the ITF artwork and the logo and creating something brand new that is a hybrid that they might be a derivative work that they might own part of. And so we take a look at the shirts and make sure that the shirts themselves are, you know, conforming to the usage rules around those logos and those marks. Next slide, please. We're almost done. So what's going on in 2021? Well, one of the big things we're talking about is do we need to restructure the trust from the current registration in Virginia to something else? It wouldn't necessarily be an LLC. I put that on here sort of to let people understand where we're thinking the direction would be. The idea here is that when this was created, it, it made sense to a lot of people that it become a trust the way it was registered. As times gone, has gone on, that sort of has not become the best practice in the legal community. And one of the things that's showing up is things like when we, as trustees, you know, we're personally on, on the, on, on the list for people that could potentially be sued for these marks and for these registrations and for bad actions. So we carry insurance on ourselves. Well, we have trouble now increasing that amount of insurance because we're a trust and the insurance companies look at us and go, that doesn't seem right, that just doesn't make sense that you guys would be that structure. We're not going to write you any additional insurance. We're giving insurance, but we're not going to increase the amount. And so one of the things we're worried up against is, well, how do we do that? Well, maybe one of the things we need to look at is restructuring ourselves legally. Still do all the same functions, nothing else would change in that regard, but just how we're registered as a legal entity so that when we interact with these other parties, we look like they expect us to look like, and we follow sort of legal best practice as of today for how we're registered and structured. And I emphasize that because sometimes people get a little freaked out. We say that we're not trying to change the trust, we're not trying to add anybody new, we're not trying to expand our scope. It would just be a sort of almost a clerical level legal registration change of how we're structured as a legal entity. So next slide, please. This is how you can reach us. You can mail us, trustees. You can go to the website, we have stuff there to contact us. Or you can talk to John Levine, who's also a trustee, and he's one of you. Or you can email me, we're very friendly people. And with that, any questions?
Thanks very much, Glenn. Any questions or comments for Glenn?
At least one, somebody has to say something.
Hi Glenn, just for clarification, if we, if we reorganize, well, we organize as a nonprofit corporation. It turns out there's no such thing as a nonprofit LLC. But as you said, it's just paperwork and the actual operation and the actual trustees and the people we talk to and the things we do would all be the same. It would just, it would, it would end up saving a fair amount of money because our insurance agent tells us that it's practically impossible to get, to get the kind of insurance we need for a trust and it's much easier for a corporation.
And allowed, of course, we're not going to, you know, go off and do this, you know, Friday night, one time in a back alley. We're going to do a consultation with the community and say, this is what we're planning to do. Here's why we're doing it. Let's get your input. Let's talk about what makes sense, and then we would act.
Luis, so let me just, let me just ask very quickly, I'm sorry, Ted, I didn't mean to interrupt. If you want, and Luis, if you need to talk, go ahead.
Okay, mine was just a quick question. The, there is this worry about the registration of the marks or the trademarks in, around the world. But the, there is some protection from WIPO, right?
Well, of course, we follow, we, we become subject to WIPO and also the, the Burn Convention for Copyrights. So all tho, those things we do follow and we are protected by. But you have to execute within the framework of those legal structures. So for instance, trademarks, well, one thing you have to use, you have to register it. And then next thing you have to use, of course, protected. And protection is, is where we actually, you know, observe if we discover somebody, say, for instance, using the ITF logo on a product, let's say somebody decided to make a router and they, they said, oh, this is an officially ITF branded router product. Well, that's an example. We'll be go have a conversation, say, you can't do that. Like that's not allowed and please stop doing that. And so, and we'll see where, if we had to go to, you know, court, we would of course do that if we needed to. But usually these things resolve themselves with letters and lawyers yelling at each other a little bit.
There has been a lot of cases in the past or just one of?
Well, I, I've only been around for about five years. Unfortunately, during that five-year time, we have not been sued. And we haven't, we haven't had to pursue anybody aggressively. We do get requests like, you know, for instance, I would like to use these materials in the following way. We do get those requests, you know, periodically throughout the year. We, the trustees will take a look at them and we will evaluate them. If they make sense and they're within the community's intent and they don't weaken our, our protections, we will say, sure, go ahead. And a really good example of that is if, you know, according to the, the current rules the ITF puts out and the trust manages for use of an RFC, for instance, if you use the entire RFC without modification, without cutting it up and without taking snippets out, just show the RFC as it is. You don't need to talk to us, you can just go ahead and do that. We've already pre-approved that. If on the other hand, you wanted to take a few lines out of the RFC and put it in your book and then, you know, do something else and take a few other lines and then maybe add some of your own special sauce around that RFC and how it said to do things and said, oh, this is still really the RFC. No, you can't do that. We, we don't allow you to take little snippets and piecemeal them apart into new structures. Because there were a lot of bad things would come from that. And not the least of which is confusion over the specification itself. If you have people that could like sort of do a hybrid specification with ours and then theirs mixed in together and people couldn't tell them apart, now we can overall be the RFC itself. Then which, which ones the right RFC? It would confuse people. And so that's why we protect these things.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to say, I'm glad that John asked the question about LLC or, or did the clarification on LLCs versus nonprofit corporation. Because when I was general counsel of the Wikimedia Foundation, which was, you know, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we had a similar set of problems with our marks. We had trademarks. And although the intellectual property of the Wikipedia and the other Wikimedia projects was freely licensed, we had to protect the mark so that people knew when they saw the mark that the content associated with it was free. And I think you have a similar situation with regard to the RFC's where you have to invoke your trademarks to make sure that there's not misidentification of something as an RFC that is not an RFC. And, and that's a hard balance to, to strike, but, but, but we were able to do it. So I, so I'm sorry that this has maybe turned into more of a comment than a question because actually between John and Luis, I have heard my questions answered. But I do respect what you're doing and I help you find some comfort in the fact that I at least recognize, you know, what, what, what you're doing with a mix of, of intellectual property protection and providing resources freely to the larger community.
Thanks. You know, this is where I probably should, you know, you bring up the, the trademark registrations, Mike. And one of the peculiarities of the law is that you can't register trademarks to trusts.
Yeah, I know, that seems to be a problem.
So right now, the people who actually own all these trademarks are actually John, myself and the other three trustees. We are personally the owners of these marks. And I've, I've joked a few times and said, don't piss us off, we'll go off and create our own ITF because we could, because we own the trademarks. So, but we won't do that, don't worry.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that, but we'll track you and see if you keep your promise.
Well, and that's part of the reason also if we, if we go to a, you know, a, a different legal structure, the hope is that those trademarks get owned by that legal structure.
That's, that's right.
And not the individual.
Right model, for sure.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that is, that and, that and the insurance are the, are the two ongoing advantages. It'll be cheaper in the future.
Right.
So, and, and well, this is the third one, John, and that is when we get a new trustee, we have to, currently we hand them a document, which is here, sign your life away. And by the way, we should tell you, there's a lot of risk involved while you're about to sign, but don't worry, we carry a lot of insurance for you. And so when we do that new structure, the hope is that that document becomes a lot less risky for the new trustees to sign. Anyway, so that's it. Any other questions?
Thanks very much, Glenn, for your report and for the explanation of the work of the trust. We look forward to working with you and thanks again.
Thanks. Hey Ted, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You, you seem to be running the meeting. Are you the new chair of this group?
Yes.
Then let me say congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the community and working group chairs section for now. We do have one additional one in tomorrow's sessions when the Governance Reform Working Group will report. But this brings us now to the president and CEO reports. Obviously, these were all distributed and the videos were distributed some time ago. So I presume, Andrew, do you, do you want to go straight to questions or is there a slide you, you want to have up?
No, I, I don't have, I mean, I assume that everybody has looked at that presentation and doesn't need to run through it again. I've noted that there've been a number of questions as well on the mailing list. I hope that, you know, things that we received there, that anything that I've answered has been the answer to people's satisfaction, but I'm happy to take any questions people have.
Great. So if folks have questions, please use the raise hand tool and we'll start ringing at you. Laura?
Andrew, sorry, I asked the question a bit late, which was, it looks like we're doing really well on a lot of the targets in the action plan. And I was curious whether in the past we had revised those targets upward of media. You know, if we're doing so well, then let's, let's set them a little higher while we can.
So the, a, as a general rule, I don't like to move goalposts once the game has started. So I think our, our plan has been actually that we keep the targets where they are in the current year. But we take this into account for the setting of future targets. I, I will note that historically, the internet society didn't always have a superb history of, of tracking these things terribly well. So there, the, the, the practice of, you know, sort of setting explicit targets and so on is one that the staff didn't really have historically. And so we've, you know, we had to learn a little bit about, about setting these things correctly and so on. So, you know, I think next years will be probably a little more accurate. But I will point out that, for instance, we've also gotten better on, you know, making budgets that we actually stick to. So on the whole, I think that this exercise is a good one. And that's part of the reason that I don't like to, like to move the numbers around while the year is going on.
That seems completely reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thanks. So Andrew, as, as Laura pointed out, a lot of stuff is going really well. Stuff that's not already achieved, seems to be well in progress. I kind of wanted to ask the reverse question. Where do you think the biggest kind of risk points are for us in the, in the remainder of the year?
Well, I, I mean, one thing, of course, is that the, the, the financial numbers, particularly with respect to org members, are not all that we would hope. And that's an area where, you know, we, we're still struggling a little bit. One of the things that I've tried to point out to, to the staff more than once, because, you know, people are sometimes a little unhappy about this. The, the, the thing about particularly large corporations that, you know, are some of the ones that we've lost is, is that they don't turn real quickly, right? So, so the problem is that it took a while for some of them to leave. And, and then they realized, oh, actually, you know, we're not getting what we need out of the internet society. So it will take us time to, to win those people back. And so that's one of the risks, that, that there's more of this softness that we haven't really fully understood. So I think that that's a big risk. There remains obviously just operational risk from the, from the realities of COVID. I mean, we don't, you know, we don't know what else, what else could happen. It feels like 2020 is still going on in some ways and, and that it's, it's a gift that keeps on giving. So I think that, you know, that, that remains a, a very serious risk. And more generally, there is this enormous risk, I think, going on for the very, you know, nature, the very meaning of the internet society. And that is that the public discourse has turned against the internet to a large extent. I think that what we see is, is, you know, certainly when I, when I first got connected to the internet, I mean, if you asked anybody at the time, you know, do you want an intricate internet connection? Everybody would have been enthusiastically, yes, that's a great idea. I love the internet, it's fantastic. You know, just, just on Thursday, I guess it was, the Canadian government brought out this plan for what they're going to do about online, online harms. And their plan is basically, well, we're gonna, we're gonna create a czar that's gonna like decide what, you know, what good speech on the internet is like. I mean, this is, you know, we no longer have to worry about totalitarian governments who don't like the internet because, you know, democratic governments that have been long in support of it have now kind of turned against it. And I think that that's a, a sort of existential risk for, you know, for the internet society. I think that's the thing that really keeps me up at night.
Well?
Yeah, so I was going through the renewals and having gone through this with other nonprofits also of the how do you get people to renew? One of the things was that there were a fair number of these failed to renewals where we simply no longer had, or your renewal people had no longer anyone to talk to at those organizations. Do we do any form of vaguely LinkedIn-like sharing of I know somebody at? Or does anybody on the board? Because I know that with investment and B C- Cause I know that with investment and BCS, one of the values they bring in is who they know. Um, and so we used to get in the habit of asking the board, do you have a contact with this customer that can help us get an in? Are we doing anything like that?
We do, yes. Um, but there is a uh, a deeper problem, uh, hiding underneath this, which is a lot of our a, a lot of our organizational sorry, we stopped using organizational. We're going to use organization. A lot of our organization members, um, uh, have we, 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 we have different kinds of organization members. And some of them really are members as organizations. But a, a chunk of them are really, you know, kind of individual members who happen to be employed by somebody. And when the person goes, the, the interest of the organization wanes as well. And what we need to do, um, and this is, I think, what the team is working very hard on, is, is to provide more general um, value for organization members, so that the organization sees, uh, an organization reason to be involved with the internet society. And I, I, I think we're getting better at it. I don't think we've got all the way there yet, but I, I believe that we're, we're headed in the right direction. Because the, the team has started thinking in those terms and we've got, we've had some changes in the staff that have really been addressing some of that.
Yeah, value propositions, um, that translate to dollars, which is really what gets them up the chain at corporations is, is a challenge. Good to hear that you're working on that. Thanks.
I have a question about manners. In the discussion, it sounded like you were looking at how it was going to be spun out in the future, where, what its future organizational home was going to be. And one of the two options was that it might be a sort of supporting organization, la IETF, LLC, and one might be that it's a, a fully independent organization. Maybe you could walk us through what the advantages and disadvantages were from the perspective of, of manners and, and what we as the board might end up having to decide about that, if anything?
Well, you'll definitely have to decide something, um, uh, in the event that it is within the, within our own organization. Um, uh, the one of the questions really boils down to a question of like, how much organization are they going to want? Uh, and because of the, because of the way that, um, because of the way the, the participants in manners are, are, are working with one another. It might be that they actually need to, um, that they actually need essentially a lobbying organization, uh, you know, a, a, uh, an industrial association of some kind. And if that's the case, then, um, probably they need to be a standalone organization. We've got to spin them out fully and they, they're not part of the internet society. The, the problem is that a lot of the participants like the link to the internet society would like to stay somehow inside the internet society. Um, and so they've, they've looked at the IETF model as one that, um, you know, seems valuable. And so I think the community is still discussing this. I think that's the, um, uh, the real critical thing. Not everybody, uh, I, I, I don't think that there's a, a total consensus on this. Um, and, and there may be uh, some stratification among the, among the participants. That is, you know, smaller operations are more keen to be sort of within the internet society and very large operators are, are much more likely to, you know, to want to join an industry association of some kind. Um, because they, they have, you know, they have different, um, sort of mental models, uh, for the, for the organizations who are, who are part of it. So I don't, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, how this is going to sort itself out. It really is something that we're trying to facilitate within the community. So I can't really, um, I can't really say which way it's likely to, likely to fall.
So there's no deadline you've given them to, to work this out?
Oh, well, I, I mean, the idea is that this is supposed to start taking effect next year. So they, you know, kind of got to get it together. I, my understanding is that the, um, the conversation is drawing to a close and that they're going to probably be making a, a, a recommendation sometime in September, uh, thereabouts.
Brian, I saw your hand and then it went down.
Because you asked the exact question I was going to ask Ted.
Okay. Are there other questions for Andrew at this time? John?
I need, my first time using the raise hand tool on this. So since nobody else wants to, um, dive, dive in on this one, I guess, I want to go back to the, your existential threat, Andrew. Um, because I agree with you, um, deeply, actually. And, um, I guess my question is, what's the plan? Like, if, if, i- i- if that's the biggest threat, like, you know, where is there any traction to get on that?
Well, uh, it's, it's a good question. The, the reason for the internet way of networking project over the last two years has really been to try to build the, the, the policy framework that we can, we can use to, to, you know, try to, try to draw the draw the discussion in a different direction. Um, now we've got to use it. Now we've got to start doing these things. And that was the reason for the emphasis in that project on, on this impact assessment toolkit, because the, the observation was that, you know, for environmental um, changes, for instance, things that people are going to change, uh, you know, when they build a road or a dam or whatever. Uh, you have to do this assessment. And in a lot of countries, it's a legally mandated one. Uh, and it's, it's pretty clear to us at least, that many of the things that people are doing are attempts to, you know, they're, they're, they really involve, this is the handle I got. So I'm going to start, I'm going to start messing with, you know, the, the definition of what an online service is, for instance. And that kind of thing has these consequences. And so what we hope is that by using this tool, we can say to people, look, you haven't done this analysis and well, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna pollute the lake, you're gonna, um, you're gonna destroy this environment. Uh, that's the tool that we've got right now. But I, I say this, I think the staff are getting tired of hearing me say it all the time. Like, you know, our, the people who are opposed to the internet, who don't want it, who want to tear it down and so on, are like national governments who can literally print money and some of the largest and best capitalized corporations in the history of humanity. And we've got less than 50 million bucks and a handful of volunteers. Like, that's what our army is, right? Um, and so we're in a perilous situation. And we need to make the organization as strong as possible to speak with one voice. That's why you keep hearing this, these attempts to like, get us focused on just our stuff. Because without that focus, we're never, you know, we're just going to be scattered all over the place. And I think, you know, I believe that we've improved quite a bit in this, in this respect over the past couple of years. Um, but now we've really, really got to join that fight, um, you know, all the time, every time it pops up. And it's very difficult to do, given the number of countries there are in the world who are trying to adopt, um, you know, legislation that is really quite harmful to the basic infrastructure of the internet.
A quick follow-up. Uh, okay, Ted?
Yes, please do.
Um, I mean, I, I learned with something I was pretty ignorant of, um, you know, on our onboarding about the limitations on lobbying that are imposed on us because of our IRS status. Do those obligations, I mean, what can we do internationally? Like, is there anything that's like different internationally for lobbying? Or is that like totally illegal? Like, I, I actually don't know the law about this at all.
So it's, it's, it, the lobbying definition is global. So anytime we talk to any government about specific legislation, we have to pay attention to, uh, to that. And we've got this tracking, um, device that, um, uh, that we have, and I get sign offs and all the rest of it. We made the election we did, uh, the year we did it, because prior to that, we hadn't been taking that, taking that election. Uh, we made the election we did precisely because we could see, oh, wow, like, we're going to have to start talking to legislators, um, and we're going to have to do it all the time. And so we've got this limitation. We're working very, very hard to make sure that we are, we stay entirely within the bounds of our, of our legal obligations and so on. Uh, and that, and it is, it's a cramp. It's a cramp on us because we have this additional problem that, you know, I, I mean, it, it, it's one thing, obviously, you know, there are definitely governments in the world who, who have long been hostile to the internet, and that was never a surprise. And, and, you know, it would be nice to try to do something about that, but the, the reality is we can't. But I, I, I am, you know, beside myself with worry about the fact that, you know, um, like Canada, the United States, France, Britain. I, I mean, these are countries that historically led the, the development of this infrastructure. And, and now it, it looks to me like, unthinkingly probably, they are, are going to tear it down because of reasons that I think are valid public policy reasons. But it's, it's really a threat to, to this infrastructure. And that's really, um, that's really what, what's worrying about it.
Please.
Sorry, I had the mic close. The, uh, when, when you speak about all these threats and the, the, the need to act as the, in a more monolithic way and with a sense of direction. Uh, it's, I, I agree very much with that. But the, uh, I'm get worried about the, this community consultation when you see that the priority uh, for the individual members is to expand rather than protect or defend. Yes. So, uh, I don't know. I, I, and I think there is not a, a simple answer, but I, I, I think we should develop some strategy to enforce these, um, uh, counteract, defend, uh, strategies amongst the individuals. And, uh, to reinforce what the organization, uh, organization members uh, were setting as a priority, which is, yeah, I, if I don't remember well, was protect, right?
So, uh, I, I do think it, it's important to recognize that, um, you know, the, the materials for the internet way of networking are not it, it's not a sort of simple thing that you can grab hold of very easily. Uh, it's, it's really a sort of conceptual one. And we've got a lot of work to do in order to make this clear to people and get people to understand, you know, what the advantage is. The other thing about it, of course, and, and this is another issue that we, we face. We're the internet society. So basically every one of our members thinks that the internet is great. And, uh, and can't understand why anybody would like, you know, not want it and so on. And so we don't have the, we don't have the, the population within ourselves that sort of naturally says, oh, yes, this is, this is under, uh, under real threat, unless you're facing these things all the time. And so I think that there's a whole lot of people for, uh, who have joined, who are really looking at, at us to, you know, sort of try to try to expand access and make sure that people have access to the internet and make sure that they have access to the, to the tools and, and, um, training that we, we provide and so on. Uh, but for the internet, I mean, if we're an advocacy organization for the internet, our problem is that we need everybody to understand the value of this thing. And I think, I think that's something that we've still got to do some more work on, uh, on those materials. But I think we've got to solid foundation. I think that that's the, that's the good news about it. I, I, I believe that that project went a long way to make it very, very clear and, and to, um, and to provide the necessary, um, uh, materials for people to be able to do the, the advocacy that we hope they will.
So, so I have three people in queue right, right now, myself, Robert, and then Mohammed. Uh, I'll make my own quick. Uh, the two things are, one, my experience with governments is that it is far, far more uh, effective dealing with them, not just telling them they shouldn't do X, if you can say do Y instead, because they want to do something. And if you just say, don't do X, the resistance to, to that message is just extraordinarily high. Uh, not nearly as high if you can say, do Y, it's the right way instead. Uh, the second, uh, point is, uh, the internet way of networking as, as, as a set of documents and as a set of approaches, I think, is, is compelling. As, as you say, as a foundation and advocating for that foundation is good, but it's not yet a call to action. And I think you, you saw from my exchange with Joyce on, on her presentations, I, I strongly believe that if we are going to get uh, the, the society as a whole, as opposed to the staff to act on this, you need a compelling call to action. And formulating that, I would suggest, is top of, top of the list of things for, for what you and your senior staff need to be doing, both to bring, um, members in, in general, and, uh, in particular, to focus them on this issue. Because that call to action can move us beyond the, the lobbying activities to which we are permitted, to the kinds of activities which the other parts of the society as organizations, as individuals, as chapters can and will do. And because they are independent actors, their limits are not the same. Uh, so I, I strongly encourage you to consider how to create a call to action. Um, and Robert, you're next.
Thank you. So, um, uh, Andrew, I completely agree with your, um, you know, urgency, you know, that, I mean, we've worked together on these issues. I also would agree, Ted, that, um, you know, we've, we're many years beyond just saying no, we have to find alternatives. Uh, but part of that, I think, is something that we're already beginning to do. And, and, uh, Andrew, you, you uh, alluded to it. And that frankly, is we're, you know, through the, you know, gathering of the data uh, about the internet. Um, but I think we can go beyond that in terms of how people are using it, how they're benefiting. Um, uh, but also understanding why there are people who are not online or are not benefiting as much. I think does become part of the compelling arguments, uh, in crafting, um, the alternatives. Um, there are um, many times that governments are, are jumping in, um, with solutions, but they have not are clearly articulated the problem that they're trying to solve for. And that's always the first question I think we need to be asking. You know, what's the problem you're solving for? Uh, and then are there ways that we, as the internet society, building a community, can help solve, help them solve those problems? Um, because oftentimes the solutions that we're seeing, that, you know, we understand are counterproductive, actually are not related to the problems they're trying to solve. Finally, um, in terms of governments, I think it's a little oversimplified, but it works. Right? It's a two by two. There are governments that are well-intentioned and those that are not. There are governments that are well-informed, and then there are those that are not. Many times what we see are well-intentioned governments that are not well-informed, uh, proposing or taking actions that have adverse consequences, even contrary to what they're trying to achieve. So part of what we're doing and what we can do as the internet society, and we'll be doing more of it, is through the, is, is helping governments become better informed to understand. We're seeing, and there's, there's a, unfortunately, a persistence, and I would argue a growing number of governments that are ill-intentioned. And some of those are extremely well-informed. And those are the most difficult to combat. Um, and then you have those that are ill-informed and ill-intentioned. And that's just more difficult to deal with. Um, and you can, each of you, you know, mentally go through that two by two and think about the kinds of responses that we're seeing from different governments for different purposes. Just one example, without naming the, the, the country. There was a, a country that began to impose, um, taxes on the internet. Um, and, and on internet usage. And one of the arguments, and, and by the way, a number of us predicted, well, that's going to reduce, people are going to drop off the internet. Right? Thinking that that was a bad thing. Um, and one of the responses from one of the government officials was, that's the point. Right? Because they don't, some governments don't want people on, online. So that's a, that, that would be what I would, uh, think of or put into the quadrant of, um, ill and ill-intentioned, well-informed. Um, and I think so, it's, so, uh, Andrew, to your point and to the agenda is I think if we have to be more strategic in thinking about how to respond. But also, you know, look, the vast, vast majority of governments and, and, and the billions of people want to be online. They see the benefits of the internet. And I think we can really help, um, you know, in, improve the, the information, the capacity, but also the compelling arguments on why it's important to be connected.
Mohammed, you may still be unmuted.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Andrew. This is, uh, really, uh, was enlightening, uh, presentation that we viewed a couple of days back. And then it's just interesting discussion as well. One thing that I, uh, just wanted to highlight here. And perhaps if not immediately, uh, in the near term or in the longer term. and perhaps if not immediately, uh, in the near term or in the longer term plans you can think of is that Internet uh connectivity and the the tagline of ISOC Internet is for everyone. Uh, when we interpret this line should mean that meaningful connectivity. A person who, uh, and I have seen people who just uh watch videos on Facebook or YouTube is also connected to the Internet. And also a person who connects to the Internet, goes online, does some business, uh, sends some money abroad or within the country, it's also a connectivity, but it's it it, uh, you may agree with me that this is a next level of the connectivity. Uh, while we can uh discuss the benefits of boards and the and the board users, the prior, their priorities, uh, we would also agree that everyone has the right to connect meaningfully to the Internet. Uh, I have seen people, uh, particularly people with disabilities, uh, refusing services or not using the services of certain banks and financial institutions, just because the the service was not accessible. Uh, when I say accessible, I mean uh that that there were certain hitches where it would require uh some other assistance, some outside assistance uh for them to use that service. So so this, I I mean to say that when when you prepare uh your next set of communications, you can include that it's not just the connectivity. And this is uh the way that uh Internet society uh is defending the Internet, because if everyone is using Internet meaningfully, it becomes more important for them to defend and also the stakes are included uh for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Uh, Andrew, that's a lot to chew on. Do you want to chew on it a little bit or answer now?
Uh, well, so, I mean, we are part of the um, I I am a commissioner in the broadband forum in the UN, and that forum is um very strong on this uh on this line of meaningful connectivity. Um, but from from the Internet society's point of view, uh, what is meaningful connectivity is dependent on you. Uh, you know, I I I don't think the Internet society has a a view about what people ought to do with their with their connections. The nice thing about the Internet is that it's this general purpose, um, uh, you know, technology, which means that you can do what you want with it. And that fact that you can do what you want with it is is part of the part of the advantage that we see. So I think that that part, that that piece of our emphasis in um in in the Internet way of networking project uh about how this is a, you know, a a general purpose technology that can be used for all kinds of different things is a core part of what the Internet society is is after in in trying to promote the Internet. But I completely agree with you that the more people rely on the Internet, the more important it becomes to them. Um, and I think that what's interesting is is that this current drift in public policy is chipping away at that general purpose. Uh, and and instead making it really a, you know, a transport mechanism for a few very large um corporations. And um that is a, that is a really dangerous um drift. And and that's that's why I get so concerned about it.
Thank you. Uh, we do have Renalia's uh report up next as part of this general discussion. So I suggest we move to to that now. And then if there's time at the end, we can return to uh more general discussion. I'm sure an existential question for the society and for the Internet as a whole uh will occupy us for more than the allotted time. Uh, so why don't we move uh to to the practical matters uh of the budget and membership that Renalia shared this?
Thank you, Ted. I hope that I've provided a clear enough overview of our planning process for the organization that essentially helps us develop the annual action plan as well as budget. So I'm happy to address any questions that you may have about that.
Well, so first, I'd like to thank you for uh addressing the questions that that I had for you uh in advance. That that was very helpful. There was one tiny follow up. Um, I wanted to to do, you you listed some of the the members who were already involved in the encryption project. And I I wondered if you if you had a target number of members you wanted involved in that or a percentage of members who you expected to be involved in that? And and how that process was gonna go would be a just an addition, a little tiny bit of additional data if you have it.
So I, we don't have targets for organizational members. What I've been doing um in terms of the success measures related to project leaders and what they're supposed to deliver is to encourage them and the project teams to integrate the ISOC community as much as possible across the board. So the org members, the chapter um members, as well as the individual members. It is a work in progress, but I would like to share with you a little bit of data um on where we stand at the end of last year in terms of participation in projects. It's in the chat right now. So you would recall in my response to your email that I had said, okay, the survey response this year is low, but last year was worse. Um, so while last year was worse, by the end of the year, we actually got pretty good involvement across our community. For example, fifty-nine percent of org members got involved in projects, and the bulk of them are, of course, in manners, but still there are others who are involved across the other projects. Um, also forty-nine of forty-nine percent of chapters in good standing also got involved in projects. A thousand eight hundred seventy-one individual members ended up did something related to projects, primarily because we've had the training called the fundamentals that informed our community members about what the projects are about, what are the issues that they're trying to tackle. And um this is part of the training where seventy-seven percent of chapters participated in it, and then more than five hundred people who participated in the training actually implemented something post-training that support projects themselves. So that's not bad. And I also wanted to show you where we are at mid-year um along the same lines. And here we are, even though we have the survey response. This is not bad for mid-year. In terms of org members, we are at forty percent. Chapters at thirty-seven percent. I expect these numbers to be higher by the end of the year. And then the indirect support or involvement is that chapters doing activities on their own, just after learning what the projects are about, then they're doing it in the areas that the projects are activating. And also, we've, we have more than three thousand individual members that are engaged. Um, so that that's the additional data point that I want to give. Steve, the short answer to your question is, I don't have a target. Um, but we will know by the end of the year in terms of how high they can go.
I really appreciate the additional data. Thank you. Luis?
Yes, that's me, right, Ted? Thank you. Uh, hi, Renalia. Thank you very much for your presentation. I sent you some uh points and questions in uh through the email. They are, the the only thing that worries me is about the statistical certainty of the results. Because the 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 sample is so small that uh we can doubt about the uh the 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 results. But making the calculations, then uh there is not that big error, because we're talking about plus minus four percent. Yes, theoretically. So, but the um, the the do we have any plan to improve this response rate? Uh, the uh, I know that only about sixty-five percent of the individual members get uh the communications because of the mail-out option and the um but do you, do we have any plan to improve the response rate to get more accurate uh responses? Or we should think about other ways, such as uh focus groups or maybe uh maybe something more controllable?
Uh huh. So last year, when we did our survey, we didn't just do the survey, we also had dedicated calls just to get more feedback qualitatively by discussing it with community members. This year, we didn't do it because we have a follow-up uh process as part of the action plan process that I had presented, which is um different parts of the organization would go back to the community to get them more involved based on areas uh that they are interested in. But I also want you to get a a bigger context on survey responses for ISOC. Last year, we had several consultations, and I noted a pattern. When our community members are interested enough in the topic, they will respond. For example, there was a consultation on learning needs last year, and the response rate was almost three thousand respondents across our community. Second example, the consultation on the new fellowship program. We had slightly over a thousand respondents. A third example is the consultation on strategic goals, which is the definition of what is open, globally connected, secure, and trustworthy Internet, which can be a little bit controversial because there is a diversity of opinions in in our community. But the response rate was also slightly over a thousand. So when it comes to the action plan priorities and what it focuses on itself, two years now, we've done the consultation and the response rate is low. So my sort of uh just hunch about it is that they are the not too interested in it at that level, but some of them who are interested will engage directly in the projects and activities themselves, and they find other ways to do what they are interested in. Certainly, we can take measures to improve by adding the focus um groups itself and building in the confidence points in the in the survey results if you prefer it that way. But my sense is it will not be a huge um improvement. I could be wrong.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, Pepper?
Um, so, Renalia, this is very helpful. And to your last point, um, uh, I think it is difficult to increase the numbers, but what I wanted to ask was, and I don't know of a way to do it, but my intuition is that if we benchmarked it against other similar organizations, right, that are doing sort of actually a lot of good work, that the relative number of respondents would not be all that different. So I'm I'm not sure that this is something that is um necessary. We we always can try to do better, and we need to do better. But I wouldn't beat up on ourselves necessarily. Um, and I I'm just wondering whether there's a way to benchmark against other similar organizations, you know, maybe in other areas. Um, and that may be something that you want to do or the staff wants to do, because I suspect it's not going to be very much different in other sectors or other parallel types of organizations.
Thank you, Pepper. I'll, I will look into that and see. And if board members have ideas on what those organizations might be, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this point? Any other uh questions or comments for Renalia's report? Uh, I'll have one final question. You said everybody is looking forward to um the the replacement of Member Nova. I I join you. I am also looking forward to the replacement of Member Nova. Do we have a theory on when when will this happy day will occur?
It is part of the plan for this year. It is under Sandy's area of responsibility, and I'm sure she would, I'm sure she would get it done.
Thank you, Renalia. It's in the process now. We're working on it.
And happily, uh, we'll we'll be moving on to uh Sandy's report next, so she can fill us in on that along with everything else. Uh, thank you very much, Renalia. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We are running a little bit ahead, but I think probably best to just go ahead and power through unless anybody feels a strong need to take a quick break now. No, okay, uh, let's go on to Sandy's report. Sandy?
Um, this is a closed session, Ted, so um we should probably move to the the other Zoom room.
Thank you very much for reminding me. Uh, so uh, thank you to our observers and to those who've been watching, because this report is financial in nature, it will be in executive session. Thanks.